Gathering size limitations would be in the ordinance presented for public comment tonight, but they're still not in Ferguson's, the ordinance that we're discussing tonight. Gathering size limits are the critical second tool to limit the spread of COVID-19. An effective ordinance must have both a mask and a gathering sized restriction section. If we rely only on our state's too generous gathering limit of 250 persons, Ferguson residents will be very likely to contact COVID-19 and spread it to the borough and other townships like Patton and College, particularly to over older township residents and to persons with pre-existing conditions. Each of those municipalities has stood strong, done their health homework, and have included both mask-wearing and gathering restrictions in their COVID-19 ordinances. Do the right thing, stand in solidarity with Patton College in the Borough to protect the health and longevity of other people in the center region. Use both tools to fight the spread of COVID-19. We know that Penn State's cases are growing rapidly. We already have a local pandemic. We asked Ferguson to adopt a very thorough and well-conceived language used in the Borough's COVID-19 ordinance 2145. The Borough only restricts gatherings in the following places: residential housing, municipal property, and the municipal parks, to 10 persons indoors and 25 outside. It does not restrict gathering sizes in businesses, schools, at Center Rexon Park programming, at Welch Pool, or at weddings, funerals, religious functions, or protest demonstrations. The health of Ferguson Township residents deserves the same consideration as elsewhere in the center region, and residents adjacent to Ferguson deserve your cooperation to severely reduce the spread of COVID-19. Remember that it's a deadly disease. It has killed almost 190,000 persons in the United States alone. And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Does anyone else care to address the board as far as the public here?
This is David Stone. I raised my hand.
Okay.
Okay. David Stone from State College Borough, but also speaking for Nittany Valley Environmental Coalition tonight. There may be other people on the phone line. We kind of cobbled together access. We were locked out for about an hour or so. I don't know if they'll want to chime in if that can be arranged. Anybody listening, though, they should try to get on Zoom because now it is working. So, you know, I would say to anybody listening, some of which people didn't even belong to NVEC, they were sitting there, well, they can get in now. I just want to add to what Dorothy said. You know, you guys have plenty of authority to do a gathering component. You left room in your, in your resolution on the 17th for additional measures. We had advocated a specific placeholder, but I don't think that's necessary, particularly since the adjacent townships have now passed the gathering ordinance. Now, we are advocating going to the well-thought-out Borough ordinance because that's Section 5, because it lists in quite a lot of detail all of the exemptions and so forth. But the other townships went for the Allegato County limit of 50 outdoors, 25 indoors. The thinking there being is Allegato County has a more, it's not quite similar. We are a college town, but again, they have a qualified health department, Act 315 Qualified Health Department. We do know that you do apparently coordinate with the Borough's health departments, such as it is, which gives the Borough plenty of authority. And I think it would be consistent to try to, try to adopt the Borough limit. You know, right now, there's a loophole. If all the adjacent townships don't have a limit, it won't be long before somebody figures out that if I want to have a party of 250 people, it's going to be, it's going to be, you know, in the Terrace Streetscape area or in one of the developments adjacent to the Borough. So, close the loophole. It could be done. I would say that, that, you know, one way to look at it, I suppose, is that a party of a certain size or a gathering of a certain size stops being purely private because the host can no longer regulate who attends, who's there. God forbid you'd have to do contact tracing. It becomes very difficult, the larger the gathering, to go back and do contact tracing. Super-spread events are really what we have to watch out for. The, the, the Section 5 component is working very well in the Borough. I can attest to that. I mean, it's extremely effective. It's like night and day. The students are by and large complying. There's been some warnings. There's been a couple of citations, but it really has been a great thing. And, you know, with, with the prospect of vaccines and stuff coming down early next year, maybe even earlier, the more we can slow the spread in the meantime, lives will be saved. I will also say the students themselves are at risk. It's somewhere between 1,000 and 1,000 young people to 1,300 young people can actually die of this, and many more have serious health consequences. So, it's not a matter of being anti-student, but we do have a crisis with so many students coming in. The numbers are rising. I think that's about it. I want to say one thing about masks for those of you who might feel that there's some kind of a civil rights issue with mask-wearing. I look at it like mask requirement is essentially gives a zone of privacy around an individual. It essentially gives everybody a zone of six feet where they can be sure that somebody who is possibly contagious doesn't encroach on their space without a mask. And it's a little bit of extra insurance. But like Dorothy said, really, the gathering size is the key component. It's absolutely justified by all the medical health knowledge. And I really urge you to just get that done. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw Wes.
Yeah. Dave?
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay. Christine and I wrote a letter. I sent it to the board this afternoon. Christine and I feel that it behooves all the local municipalities to have, have complete continuity in their choice of COVID regulations. We don't think that it serves any good purpose for the local government's act. Autonomous is an unprecedented situation. In seven months of a nation torn apart by the lack of leadership and providing continuity in its emergency health programs, this has confused people needlessly and is why things have been able to be politicized when they shouldn't have been. As Ferguson citizens, let's not be part of the problem but a clear set of rules and punishments. Anything less, this is confusing. We've found that this point of the Borough waited until the very last minute before Penn State students returned to formulate and formulate a unified set of rules and punishments with all the local ones. Be that as it may, let's get it together now and do the right thing for the citizens of Ferguson and the center region. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Does anyone else care to address the board as far as the public here?
This is David Stone. I raised my hand.
Okay.
Okay. David Stone from State College Borough, but also speaking for Nittany Valley Environmental Coalition tonight. There may be other people on the phone line. We kind of cobbled together access. We were locked out for about an hour or so. I don't know if they'll want to chime in if that can be arranged. Anybody listening, though, they should try to get on Zoom because now it is working. So, you know, I would say to anybody listening, some of which people didn't even belong to NVEC, they were sitting there, well, they can get in now. I just want to add to what Dorothy said. You know, you guys have plenty of authority to do a gathering component. You left room in your, in your resolution on the 17th for additional measures. We had advocated a specific placeholder, but I don't think that's necessary, particularly since the adjacent townships have now passed the gathering ordinance. Now, we are advocating going to the well-thought-out Borough ordinance because that's Section 5, because it lists in quite a lot of detail all of the exemptions and so forth. But the other townships went for the Allegato County limit of 50 outdoors, 25 indoors. The thinking there being is Allegato County has a more, it's not quite similar. We are a college town, but again, they have a, they have a qualified health department, Act 315 Qualified Health Department. We do know that you do apparently coordinate with the Borough's health departments, such as it is, which gives the Borough plenty of authority. And I think it would be consistent to try to, try to adopt the Borough limit. You know, right now, there's a loophole. If all the adjacent townships don't have a limit, it won't be long before somebody figures out that if I want to have a party of 250 people, it's going to be, it's going to be, you know, in the Terrace Streetscape area or in one of the developments adjacent to the Borough. So, close the loophole. It could be done. I would say that, that, you know, one way to look at it, I suppose, is that a party of a certain size or a gathering of a certain size stops being purely private because the host can no longer regulate who attends, who's there. God forbid you'd have to do contact tracing. It becomes very difficult, the larger the gathering, to go back and do contact tracing. Super-spreder events are really what we have to watch out for. The, the, the Section 5 component is working very well in the Borough. I can attest to that. I mean, it's extremely effective. It's like night and day. The students are by and large complying. There's been some warnings. There's been a couple of, a couple of citations, but it really has been a great thing. And, you know, with, with the prospect of vaccines and stuff coming down early next year, maybe even earlier, the more we can slow the spread in the meantime, lives will be saved. I will also say the students themselves are at risk. It's somewhere between 1,000 and 1,000 young people to 1,300 young people can actually die of this, and many more have serious health consequences. So, it's not a matter of being anti-student, but we do have a crisis with so many students coming in. The numbers are rising. I think that's about it. I want to say one thing about masks for those of you who might feel that there's some kind of a civil rights issue with mask-wearing. I look at it like mask requirement is essentially gives a zone of privacy around an individual. It essentially gives everybody a zone of six feet where they can be sure that somebody who is possibly contagious doesn't encroach on their space without a mask. And it's a little bit of extra insurance. But like Dorothy said, really, the gathering size is the key component. It's absolutely justified by all the medical health knowledge. And I really urge you to just get that done. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw Wes.
Yeah. Dave?
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay. Christine and I wrote a letter. I sent it to the board this afternoon. Christine and I feel that it behooves all the local municipalities to have, have complete continuity in their choice of COVID regulations. We don't think that it serves any good purpose for the local government's act. Autonomous is an unprecedented situation. In seven months of a nation torn apart by the lack of leadership and providing continuity in its emergency health programs, this has confused people needlessly and is why things have been able to be politicized when they shouldn't have been. As Ferguson citizens, let's not be part of the problem but a clear set of rules and punishments. Anything less, this is confusing. We've found that this point of the Borough waited until the very last minute before Penn State students returned to formulate and formulate a unified set of rules and punishments with all the local ones. Be that as it may, let's get it together now and do the right thing for the citizens of Ferguson and the center region. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Does anyone else care to address the board?
Yes. Can everybody hear Pam Stackler? She's on the phone here. So, Pam, I'm going to try to.
Yeah, I tried getting into Zoom again and I couldn't get in. So, I just went back to the phone.
are important, but also so is gathering size, especially in a college town. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Can I ask a quick question for clarification? I apologize for not being at the meeting when we discussed this, but somebody had brought up an example of any size gathering where people are not masked and or socially distanced.
Ah, hell no.
So my understanding is that regardless of the size of gathering, people still have to be masked and or socially distanced. Is that incorrect?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So in a situation where there was a gathering of two hundred and twenty people, if they were not masked, that would be a possible intervention could happen. Ten ten people unmasked and not socially distanced. There could be a possible intervention there.
Dear God. That's correct.
Thanks.
So 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 a follow up on that. If people are you know, is it we have, I I saw in the ordinance a requirement for face coverings. But with respect to social distancing, we don't really have any requirement as such. So in principle, without that, you know, without that limit, people could be gathering as as long as, you know, we could have two hundred and fifty people partying with masks. And I my reading was that that would be allowed by the ordinance as it is today.
The the restrictions on maintaining appropriate distance are provided for in the Department of Health guidance too. So essentially, what we're looking at doing with this draft ordinance is providing for punitive measures where necessary and the ability for either law enforcement or the ordinance enforcement officer to you know, provide citations to those that are in violation or provide warnings. But only where the only things that are stipulated are where they are more restrictive in in many cases than what or at least clarifying what State Department of Health guidelines have already laid down. Any any components relative to pro- public-private gathering, indoor-outdoor spaces, social distancing, et cetera. Our ordinance would simply or our enforcement would simply defer to the state guidance and and the state regulations relative to those restrictions.
Are there other public comments? I I want to hold the board discussion until we get to the after we have a motion. So I'd like to take any other public comments at this point, since this is a public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Okay, Jeremy?
Jeremy Thompson, Park Forest. I believe the board had actually mentioned about this a month ago about limitations when it came to those in like retail establishments and other places of business. And I just wanted to point out something that I've observed over the past couple of weeks now. When I've been in certain stores that there have been people shopping in groups of three or more, sometimes maybe eight to a dozen. I do believe early on in COVID, a lot of major retailers had asked those to limit how many they shop with to help reduce density, which would help slow the spread of the virus. And I believe strongly even today that still holds true because ideally, we want to try to minimize the amount of density that there is in one certain place and be helpful if this body would take a look at that. So that's what I have to share.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
Any other comments before we move to board discussion? Seeing none.
Steve, this is this is Dave Stone again. Just just I I reserve, I won't make a comment now. But I I will want to make a comment during the board discussion or after your board discussion. Thank you.
We we may do that. I'm not sure if that's.
Well, just then I'll make my comment now if I may during the public hearing. So basically, you know, you have authority and I didn't get into this in my comments. And and now that David, and I appreciate that, explaining his thinking, I I need to make a couple of points. Number one, because you're a home charter, a home rule, you actually have more authority than college and patent did when they established the fifty-person limit. I will also say, and I'm going to run through this quickly, and I appreciate the time. You know, in terms of the police interaction, I actually think that having clear rules facilitates good relations. And I think that's what we see, since mainly the interaction is going to be education. And having clear limits, you know, it's like good fences make good neighbors. Having a clear limit, a number of limit, when you can begin to approach a group and say, look, you're getting quite a few people out here. You really ought to be masking. You ought to be social distancing. You're the host, you know, and so forth and so on. The 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 matter of the police interaction, I I actually think this is a confidence building thing between the community and the police. And those who those who are those who are liable to those who are liable to be anti-mask and 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 see a political agenda here actually happen to be the people that are most most in favor of of the police. So I think it's actually a a community building thing. And it's worked pretty good in the borough. So I I guess I guess I would say you have the authority. It really is it hurts a lot for the townships that have passed a gathering ordinance if if you if you don't do it. And it really, it really is quite dangerous. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
This is could you identify yourself and
My name is Jack, and I wanted to ask if we would if it could be in the works of actually being able to perform a citizen's arrest upon a neighbor who is not following our social social distance and gathering policies.
I'm think I would ask the chief if he could make a comment on that. Have no idea.
No, you could call nine-one-one or the, I'm sorry, not nine-one-one, the non-emergency phone number and refer it to the police. There wouldn't be anything as far as making a citizen's arrest.
Okay. All right.
Are there any other comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if we have a motion from the board.
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the temporary emergency ordinance requiring the wearing of face coverings and implementing additional regulations to reduce the risk of transmission of the COVID nineteen virus.
Second from Laura.
Okay, we have a motion a second. I just want to point out that this is sorry, I lost my sound there. That because this is a ordinance, if we make significant changes tonight, we would have to continue the public hearing and pass it at the next meeting. If we don't make significant changes, we can pass it tonight. However, if we do make a change, we can continue the temporary ordinance that we passed previously. So it's it's possible to make amendments to this, but they would not take effect until we have a continuance of public hearing. I think that's correct, isn't it, Dave?
That is correct.
Okay. So I'll open up the board discussion then, since we have a motion on the table.
Laura, I have a question for clarification. Under section three, location exemptions, item A says in personal private vehicles and private dwellings. I'm assuming because of the definition of, I think it was household earlier, that that means people who are in private dwellings that live there and not a party at a private dwelling, that there might be an intervention at. Is that correct?
Yes. So that that would be the intention. Right, that's correct.
Okay. So I guess it to me, it doesn't read that way. So if you look at B, we indicate at times when members of the public, et cetera, et cetera, are not present. But we don't indicate that at letter A. So to me, it reads like if you're in a private dwelling, regardless of whose private dwelling it is, this doesn't apply. So I'm just wondering if we could put some language in there for clarification, or if you could show me a different read of that or a different section.
Laura, I sort of felt that way about point D, where it said while participating in recreational physical activities. So it seemed to me that if everybody said we're out jogging and there were fifteen people on a trail, no one would have to mask up because they're jogging. And it's sort of it reads awkwardly, and I was confused by it.
That is correct. The the limit, the exemption on recreational activities indoor/outdoor would apply. So if it was a group that was out jogging and that were the exemption they were invoking under this draft ordinance, they would not be required to wear a mask.
So under under D, they don't need to maintain distancing or anything?
Well, so maintaining social distancing is a is a provision of the Department of Health guidelines. The the challenge there is so we would still be permitted to and enabled to enforce those guidelines. But of course, what we're talking about frankly is is, you know, having somebody from law enforcement go into a a crowd or or go out to a you know, gathering and basically just tell people to to step back a little bit. I mean, it wouldn't necessarily be something that we would be going in and issuing citations to every individual that were involved. I I think there really is an element of enforceability, if that's a word, that needs to be considered with this draft ordinance. And I mean, we can, to some degree, legislate, you know, good productive habits to combat the spread of COVID nineteen, and that's what we're recommending we proceed with. But in areas that enforcement frankly is just not practical, you know, we're going to be relying on people to just do the right thing. And I know that maybe not what some people may not be what some people want to hear. Unfortunately, that's that's the reality of the climate that we live in. We're very fortunate to have local law enforcement in Ferguson Township. There are many municipalities around the Commonwealth that are purely leaning on state police or other types of enforcement for this. So I think we have a leg up. I think we are permitted to enact or and promulgate more restrictive regulations, and we can rely on enforcement where where it's practical. But I I think some of the challenge here is going to be where that proverbial rubber hits the road and what happens when somebody is you know, not compliant or refuses to be compliant. How do we step in and and get them to do the right thing?
What about a neighborhood watch?
Some degree, we can legislate that. To some degree, we're just going to have to to rely on
community sense.
I think I think a neighborhood person would want to call the police if they feel that there's a violation. But back to so back to D then. All right. So I'll provide an example where I'm not comfortable with leaving D just as it is unless you're going to tell me there's a different read. So let's take, for example, the business that we provided, some sort of exemption from zoning so that they could do their exercise things outside. And one of the conditions of them being able to do that was that they would comply with the distancing or the masking outside. So when we write that it's exempt, if they're in physical activities, that then exempts that business from complying with something that we put a condition of compliance on. So even though in letter B, in private business locations, et cetera, et cetera, with the distance, but I see that there's a potential conflict there. Do you not? Do you all see that?
Yes.
And so I I would like to propose an amendment to D where we add the at least the as long as there is a distance of at least six feet between individuals maintained.
Objection?
You have no right to object. I'm sorry. This is a discussion of the board. This is.
I second that amendment.
So we we have a motion to make an amendment by percentage, seconded by Laura. This is an amendment to add that the social distancing would be required within that exception. Is that right, percentage?
Yes.
Sure we have it right? Yeah, okay. So is there any discussion on this amendment?
Yes. I'm maybe I'm not looking at the right thing. Are there two letter Ds? Oh, yeah, there are.
They're talking about the first letter D, so the second letter D is actually E.
Okay. I because I was losing track of which D we were talking about, and then I discovered that there were two. So I'm not sure what Patty, which D Patty and Laura were referring to.
Okay, so that's a minor revision there, Dave.
Yeah, we'll we'll make that adjustment. Thank you.
You were talking about the with the exercise.
Yes.
Yes.
I I'm interested in that amendment because it clarifies that that's really what we mean. And point taken about enforcement. Our police are going to have to be able to discern when to intervene and when not to intervene. And I think my example of the business, right, that's having people that are supposed to be six feet apart at least, that's one thing versus a group of three joggers that are passing through. Maybe that's another. But I think that for clarity's sake, the meaning is that there is still distance that's maintained. And if we mean that, we should probably write that for clarity's sake.
Yeah, I my thought on it is this is a you know, I I feel that we should stay with the Department of Health guidelines, but I would support this amendment because I think it's a clarification that is implied with it and within it if it's not stated. So I I have no problem with making that modification. Any other comments on the amendment?
Could you just restate what the amendment was, please?
It's it's an amendment to state that in items or section three, item D, that the mask exemption applies, but social distancing is still required or a distance of six feet is required along with that. Or that's that's not exempted, basically.
So it would be that the exemption would be while participating in recreational physical activities, whether outdoor or indoor, as long as there is a distance of at least six feet between individuals maintained. So I'm basically taking the last thing that was in B and adding it at the end of D, if that helps.
Okay, thanks, percentage. So is there any other discussion on the amendment?
And is that similar to what is in the borough ordinance or the other municipalities ordinances?
I thought that the borough said that you had to be masked while you were jogging.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I I think that we're looking at a different ordinance basically than what they have.
I know, but I was I was wondering what their recreational exemption was. So if they have none, but I have no objection to this amendment.
Okay, so I will call for a vote on the amendment. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would think that this will be one that I would consider mine, or Dave.
I agree. Yeah, this is this is consistent with Department of Health regulations. I don't think there's a need to re-advertise.
Right.
Can we also go back to letter A just for for clarification purposes? So our meaning there is that if you are in your own private vehicle or your own private dwelling, that you are exempted. To me, it's really not clear, especially with the dwelling part, that it has to be your own dwelling. So I'd just like to propose that we insert some language there that clarifies that. And I don't see that as a change. It was what we meant. But I think that the read is too loose and it does not it doesn't necessarily indicate that it has to be your own.
So would you consider something like owner's private dwelling?
Yes.
Or residence private. Yeah.
Right. Yeah, resident because of renters. They're not owners.
Right. Sorry. Yeah, that's better.
So I would move that we insert the word residence before private dwelling in item A in section three.
Percentage second.
Okay, that is a. Okay, that is a motion of second. Are there any comments or discussion on that item? Okay, so we have a motion on the amendment. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And again, I think that's a minor enough change that we're okay with it. Is there any other discussion or changes?
Hi Laura, I wanted to just bring up what Jeremy had brought up and just get some clarification. So as it is right now, that, that part of the health department's guidance has been removed. Is that correct? Is it, is it basically now they don't care if you're in groups as long as you're masked and compliant with the overall number restriction?
My understanding, Dave, you can correct me if off on this, is that the, the Department of Health regulation is just two hundred and fifty outdoors or twenty-five indoors is the number limit for gatherings.
So basically really.
Paul Bright, if you've got any different interpretation.
Yeah, the, the only thing I can think of too is maybe Jeremy clarification. Are you just talking about like a group of shoppers pushing around a shopping cart or the entire store? I mean, if it's just somebody's shopping cart, there's really no restrictions on that. They could all be family members. Is that what you're?
I, I was referring to groups of shoppers. I, like I was pointing out, I'm noticing, like, I, I understand if, if it is a family or somebody, a caregiver shopping with a couple of people. But I'm, I'm noticing some instances where it kind of appears there's just larger groups of people just casually shopping and.
In those cases though, it, those individuals are still counted as individuals for the total of twenty-five indoors. They're not counted as like that clump is one person, even if they're all in the same household, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So I think that in that case, maybe education of the business, that they all still count as individuals. Because I think that businesses are probably motivated to maximize the number of paying customers that are indoors and probably want to, if, if those clumps of people aren't all paying people, they're probably going to want to try to, try to maximize their profit. And so I guess I, I'm seeing that more as kind of an education piece than necessarily a, a regulation piece.
I, I would say in some cases too, we may be looking at a, a situation where it's a group of roommates, where you have, even, you know, a household doesn't necessarily mean a family. If you have several people living together and shopping together, uh, you know, it would fall within the, the regulation.
I agree with that. I think the important part here is that when there's a clump of people shopping like that, if they're all in the same household in whatever manner, they do sometimes provide an impediment for somebody else who's trying to get past them in a safe way. And so again, I'm going to go back to education that that business really should be helping their customers understand that they can shop however they want, but they need to be able to allow other people to pass safely.
My, my point exactly Laura, you're, you're increasing density when you want to try to decrease density to promote social distancing and other safeguards.
Yeah. I think that if we're seeing certain businesses that are having problems with that, I'm thinking grocery stores with carts and groups of roommate shopping, that that would be an opportunity for education. And maybe that our, our police could, you know, work with that business to help them understand how important it is. And I think, you know, they want more customers to feel safe so they're in shopping. So I think that there is an incentive for them to, you know, try to help their customers comply.
Is there anything else from the board?
Yeah, so I have, with respect to four A, which is the exception for the, for the face covering. I have received some comments from some of our residents, a few. And I think this is another place where we diverge from, from the, the borough's ordinance. And the issue here is that, I think, you know, if people claim a medical condition, we would, I, my preference and, you know, that also of the two people who contacted me would be to have, you know, that to be documented. In my, you know, for example, my own son says that he has a medical exemption and he's six. But so of course he does not. And so it's easy to, you know, we will get into this mess of what is a medical exemption and what is a condition and so on and so forth. So my preference would be to get something like the borough says, which I have in front of me, which says that provided that the said person provides documentation from a licensed medical professional, not saying anything related to any disease they have, but just that the wearing of the mask would inconvenience them and would affect their health. And, and then that person, the borough's thing says that they have to provide the documentation immediately or within five days, and then the citation will not be issued. So I would like the board to see if, you know, if, if that is something that we should talk about.
Well, my, my personal feeling on it is that because we are relying on the Department of Health guidance as the, sort of the enabling power for us to make an ordinance here, that we should not go beyond the Department of Health guidance, which does not call for any documentation and, you know, specifically says it's not required. I know the borough did go that way. I, I don't know that they have any legal basis for saying they have the right to do it. And I, my feeling is that we really don't if we're saying that a Department of Health guidance is the basis of our ordinance. So I would vote against if we made an amendment, you know, proposed an amendment for that. I would, I would vote against it because I, I think that goes beyond our, the authority that we're claiming.
Yes.
Open up to the rest, if anyone else has comment or question.
So my reading on that is that we are not preempted from, from coming up with something which is more restrictive than, than what the, what the state and the Department of Health has.
I also agree in principle, but I'm concerned, I want us to have something that's very strong and not really challengeable. And so I'm really on the fence with this. I'm, I'm, I'm just nervous that it's going to open us up to challenge. And then we're going to be involved in something we don't want to be involved in. But in principle, I completely agree. And I do think there are going to be people that try to prove a point and take advantage of that. And that's unfortunate.
I agree with the suggestion also and share Laura's concerns. And then, you know, I'm very interested in having this be consistent with the other municipalities. So not that we're mirroring them, but we're, but to just ask what is in the college township and Patton Township ordinances regarding that?
I also had that question about gathering size. I know the borough is, is more restrictive, but my understanding was that Patton and college were with us, with us, our level of restriction. Does, can anybody correct me on that?
Sorry, I thought we don't have a gathering size in that, at least as it's written. We don't have a limit.
Uh, well, we have it, my understanding is it's written to align with the Department of Health and so that'd be twenty-five indoors and two fifty outdoors. So I think that college and Patton also are aligned with the Department of Health and will change along with the Department of Health.
I, I, this is Dave Stone, I have to interject. I was, attended both meetings. They went for fifty outdoors, so they did, they were more restrictive than the state limit. It was a big discussion. And they also contacted the state and the state encouraged them to put up stricter limits if they wanted to. So I, I think, I think, you know, there's factual questions here that are, that are determining this discussion and it bothers me a bit because there were detailed, detailed discussions. And on the, on the mask provision that the borough provided, which is well thought out by Cherry Williams, they made the distinction between requiring documentation of a particular medical condition and just the general assertion. So in other words, the idea would be that if you're just asking people to make a general assertion within five days, you aren't getting into the HIPAA violation. So there's a lot of detailed discussion at all of these venues that I really, I really would hope you guys would take cognizance of. Thank you.
Dave, I did listen in, into the borough's discussion and it's not quite how I interpreted it, but I understand your interpretation. I did not have the time to listen to the college or Patton Township, so. But I am just asking, we are trying to align somewhat with their restrictions. And so if college and Patton both have the exact same gathering restrictions, I would be more than willing to entertain that.
That's what I was questioning too Laura, because when we discussed this last time, you know, we were in a bit of a different situation. And I was supportive of following the Department of, Department of Health guidelines and having those in there. It's helpful now, I think, that we're in a different situation and having this discussion. You know, my views changed a little bit, knowing what Penn State's numbers are and their reaction. So it, it forces me to want to be, you know, much more conservative with this and in, in gathering sizes and put in some kind of limits, so.
I agree with that wholeheartedly. If I hear one more time, the students are here to stay, you can't do anything about it. I'm going to lose my mind, you know, it's, you know, we're not getting a lot of help from Penn State. Really all being.
That's how I feel, because even if, even if they go to remote classes, the students are staying here. So, you know, what, what we can do to bring it back to the levels we had over the summer, you know, where we were, you know, seen, seen fewer cases. You know, if that is true, that students are here no matter what, then I feel like we need to put in some, some stronger restrictions here. So I would, I would, and, and as well, I want to align with what our neighboring municipalities are, are enacting. So yes, we had a different discussion regarding this the last time we brought this up because we were prob, I don't think the college or Patton had their ordinances done yet. So we were entering, you know, uncharted territory only. The borough had done theirs and so we were thinking, okay, well, we probably don't have this kind of crowd gathering issues that they will in the borough. We won't have lines coming out of bars like they would in the borough. It was a different discussion and so my opinions evolved on it. Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I'm, that, that was what, that was it.
Yeah, so I, just because people, I, I have some notes and these were, so Patton Township limits the residential gatherings to twenty-five people and outdoor gatherings at public parks, municipal properties to fifty. Now note that the state limits are twenty-five and two fifty. And the state college, borough's limits are ten and twenty-five. And college township, I don't have it in my notes, but I have it that they have Patton and state college limit lines to ten people. So I think I don't have the college township ones. I have state college and Patton. They limit lines to ten people and Patton limits the public gathering size to fifty and leaves the residential gathering size to twenty-five. Which is more, the public number is more restrictive than the states.
Also, didn't, didn't I just read that Governor Wolf said that bars have to close at ten now? So that kind of makes me a little nervous too in terms of, well, if the bars close, they might just spill to residences, the parties that is.
Right.
And on that, you know, I would, I would like someone who knows better than me to comment. Do we have a line problem or foresee a line problem in, in Ferguson Township? Like, you know, when the waffle shop opens or something, I don't know.
I hadn't thought about the waffle shop, but I was thinking about bars, not at bars.
Bars, definitely, we haven't had any issue at any bars. Waffle shop, yes, there gets to be a crowd, but interestingly enough, they do a pretty good job as they take your name at the door and then people pretty much hang around their vehicles, massive social distancing, and then they're called into the restaurant. So not really there either.
And it's, it's worth noting too, that the restrictions placed on queuing of lines pertain to the public right of way. And so even at the waffle shop, you're not queuing in the public right of way. It's entirely within the, the boundaries of a private property.
That's right, I remember that and it was about passing safely on a sidewalk.
Right, yeah. So we don't really have the same conditions that they experienced downtown in the borough, which is why that was, that provision was omitted. It's not to say you couldn't include it, it just wouldn't apply.
So if we do change, obviously if we change the gathering size limit, that is a major change and would have to be re-advertised, yeah?
That's correct. Yeah, I would suggest if there's, if the board is interested in placing additional restrictions on indoor/outdoor gatherings, that it be re-advertized for September twenty-first and that there be action this evening to extend the temporary emergency ordinance that expires at midnight tonight.
So I'm not necessarily interested in restricting indoor gathering any more than twenty-five or others?
No. I think I was comfortable with that number. Did we, if I don't see him on my screen here?
I'm, I'm not really sure what's happening with the chairman. I'm trying to.
Oh, where's Steve?
And he's bopped out, I, he's tried to join a couple of times. I've, I've admitted him, I don't know if he's having internet issues or, or what the problem may be. But I have a, he's in the waiting room and says he's joining.
So far now Laura?
It's a battlefield promotion.
I, I'm fine with the twenty-five, the outdoor two fifty is too big for me and I would prefer a limit to that.
That's what I would want to consider also.
Much lower limit.
What do you think Patty?
I, I'm just trying to think, so where would two hundred and fifty people gather outdoors?
Youth Little League possibly?
More than fifty.
Have baseball games down here off of Bristol.
Update received.
No, you're not. Sorry, that was to Joe.
Patty, a park?
An auction?
And just so, just to go back to the exemptions that were listed in, maybe, that maybe were listed in the college or Patton Township ordinances. So were businesses, schools, park and rec activities? And I would say not just park and rec agency, but recreational, that kind of thing. You know, there can be exemptions along those lines.
And I'm not sure why we would want to change the restrictions though and provide exemptions. I'm honestly not sure why we're providing exemptions for park and rec things.
Well, I, I can see, you know, there can be a difference between a close gathering of proximity, close gathering of, of folks or, you know, if you're at, you know, Welsh Pool was listed, I think, in the. um, you know, Welsh Pool was listed, I think in the public common is one of the exemptions. So then, uh, you know, you have different groups of people, um, together, but you know, if you're at a park, they, at a game, you know, at a soccer game. Yes, you are going to have those families separated easily if you're, if you're out there. So I, I would want some sort of exemptions like that. Um. But yeah.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it. I just wasn't really understanding it fully, but that's a good explanation. Steve still having trouble? So weird.
Uh, but maybe I, this is Dave Stone, maybe I can take advantage of a lull here.
I'm not sure.
And just, and just say, you know, the gathering size is predominantly on private property, like outside a residence or somebody's yard. And the borough has detailed, uh, exceptions carved out for all of those cases. Uh, now parks, I think, can, are, can fall under that, but certainly recreational activities approved by the, or endorsed by the Parks and Rec are allowed. I, I mean, I, I really suggest if you guys want to go ahead, you know, if, if you, if you want to have another public hearing, you know, look at, look at sections five, it's all carved out. And if you basically advertise that, then people could come in on comment on the various aspects. But I, I, I find, I noticed at college as well, there was a lot of time spent reinventing the wheel. And, and the, you know, a lot of that work has been done and it's just a matter of you guys feeling comfortable with it and verifying with it and seeing what your, your residents want to do. But, 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 uh, and, and for, 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 uh, Mr. Mitra's point, uh, college is 50, 50 outside, uh, private residences and so forth with the exceptions. And, and that, that meeting happened on September the 3rd. So it's, it's fairly recent information and the, and the press hasn't really covered it. Uh, I, I appreciate the chance to comment. Bye.
So what does the board think in terms of outdoor gathering limitations? Are we looking at 50? Because that's consistent with college and patent township? With some exemptions?
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that as well.
So, oh, I'm trying to log in. So Laura, could you run things so I get in?
Sure. Um, so I guess what we'll do then is take a motion to make that change. Um, see if it passes and then if so, we'll re-advertise with that change. Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that, uh, we limit the, uh, residential gatherings uh, to 25, no more than 25 people and outdoor gatherings, uh, to no more than 50 people.
I'll second. Can I add on to that? Can?
Think you can amend it.
Right. So that we can establish that there will be exemptions to those numbers determined.
Dave, do we have to vote on the, do we have to, we have to vote on the amendment first and then vote on the motion?
I think Mr. Mitra, if he wants to do so, he can modify his motion since it hasn't really been seconded, I guess, in its, in its pure form, if he's willing to do that. And then it could just be seconded and move forward that in that fashion.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm willing to, uh, modify that, uh, the, the limits uh, on, um, on, on gatherings, um, with, um, so the modification would be that we allow exemptions, um, related to outdoor ga, you know, I, I don't know. Lisa, can you help out with the?
Right. Right. I think, I think. I guess my question is, do we need a motion at this point? Can we move to continue the temporary ordinance? And then agree that we're going to go back and revise this? Because I don't think we're at a place right now where we can establish what the exemptions would be.
So the, I, I, I have the state college exemptions. They have exemptions for weddings, funerals, protests, public and private schools and religious functions.
And they have parks and rec under there also?
Uh, let me look at some other.
But I think that that sounds good. If you want to add park and rec into all those modifications, present it into your original motion.
Yeah, they have, um, uh, they have exemptions for outdoors when you're not within six feet of someone else and uh, inside a private vehicle and so on and so forth. So those are possibly with respect to the mask. Not as such with respect to the, uh, the size of the gatherings. Um.
I think that those exemptions listed, I would, I would be comfortable with that, provided there's also one for not just park and rec department activities, but also sports league activities. I wouldn't want to prevent, um, some Little League, some soccer activities that aren't part of the Parks and Rec department. I'm not sure how they, how they phrase that. Um.
Okay.
But we probably have, you know, six more weeks of decent weather where people can be outside, um, and doing some of these activities that I don't want to, and, and they are outside. They are, um, separated masked when necessary. That's in there.
So we, do we want to have the, uh, the exemptions for weddings, funerals, religious functions? These have been, uh, sources of uh, virus spread and, uh, so on in some places, but maybe without the social distancing. So if we want to.
So I think, I don't know, just with the process, we kind of have a motion sort of on the table and kind of a second. So or maybe either kind of withdraw it, go back to discussion, or maybe make, make a motion? Not really sure. Not really chair yet, but.
Yeah, I'll, I'll amend my motion, uh, to say that we limit.
And that to, uh, to withdraw the motion and make a new one than trying to amend when you've made.
So I'll, I'll withdraw the motion and make a new motion. Uh, the new motion is that we limit, uh, the outdoor, uh, gathering size uh, to no more than, what did we decide? 25 or 10?
50.
Outdoor, outdoor one. Yeah. So the, I, I limit the, uh, not gathering size for the outdoor, um, is 50 and a limit on the gathering size for indoor gatherings is 10 with exceptions for, um, the, for weddings, funerals, protests, public and private schools, religious functions and, uh, outdoor activities while maintaining social distancing.
The indoor limit I thought was 25.
Okay. So indoor limit is 25.
Okay. Do we have a second on the motion that limits outdoor gatherings to 50 with the exemptions presented stated? And indoor gatherings to 25?
Can I ask a question? Were businesses listed in that?
In there, I don't see it. Yeah.
So like, I, I don't know what the big box store.
Can I say something? I have the, I have the ordinance in front of me. And it's, it is, doesn't, does not include businesses. It says, "The provisions of this section limiting size of gathering shall not apply to non-residential properties or functions or events, including private business locations, private offices, public and private schools, center region parks and rec programming and Welsh Pool, religious functions and events such as weddings, funerals or protest demonstrations." Sorry to butt in.
That's okay. So I'm, you know, giant on North Atherton? How would this?
Have an indoor, an, an indoor limit of 25?
No, I think the, it examines the private businesses. They can operate according to state guidelines, but the state guidelines are to operate at 25% of their capacity. So. Um, so this is only for public places. So the limits.
Yes. There are different limitations that are placed on certain kinds of establishments like that. Mr. Mitra is correct. It's based on your permitted capacity. Rather than a, just a blanket restriction on, on the number of folks allowed indoors.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to clarify before we moved forward. Okay. Thank you.
I'm feeling a little bit shaky about this motion. Um, I'm not sure if I have clarity on exactly where we're going with the direction with some intervention from Dorothy. And so, um, if others feel comfortable with it, let's look for a second and then have some discussion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
This is Lisa.
Great. Okay. So let's have some discussion to explore this motion. Um, further iterating the exemptions.
Hi Steve. Yay. Um.
And talking a little bit about what that means for businesses. So the exemptions apply to private residences. No, businesses. So if I wanted to have a wedding in a private residence that was 75 people, I'm able or unable to do that now with this motion?
Well, weddings are, uh, explicitly called out as an, uh, as an exception. So if we let that stay, then you can, uh, have a wedding with 75 people.
At both a private residence and a business?
Right.
Okay. Do others have questions about the clarity of what we're moving?
No, I'm more confused than ever.
I'm with you, Patty.
I, yeah, I.
So, uh, can I share my screen, uh, Mr. Buboka?
You may, yes.
All right. So. Yeah, if you can see. So this is what I'm looking at. Gatherings of persons that are not from the same household, uh, shall be limited as follows. In all housing types, gatherings of more than 10% will be, shall be prohibited. We replaced this to 25. Gatherings that are in, uh, Ferguson Township public parks and on the municipal property of more than 25% shall be prohibited. We'll make that 50. Gathering in other private commercial properties shall be restricted by the limitations established by the Pennsylvania Department of Health. Gathering size restrictions set for in the ordinance shall apply for gatherings both indoors and outdoors on the property. And when the number of household members exceeds the limitations, no additional person shall gather at this property, either indoors or outdoors. The provisions shall not apply to private business locations, private offices, events such as weddings, funerals, protests, demonstrations, public, private schools and religious functions. So this is, i- if I can, this is sort of what I was basing it off. And then we can adapt anything that we want. Um.
Could, could, could you check the number of your ordinance? Because I think that's an older version.
Oh, this is 2144.
No, it's four, I have four, five, 2145.
Sorry.
It is different from that.
Oh, Jesus.
So I'll also add that if, if it's written like that, Lisa, it would not include other sporting events. It looks like, um, they're not exempted.
Right. I'm curious why they wrote it.
So, 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 so this is David, David Stone. Maybe I can answer that. The later, the later.
Participating on the part of the public, I, I don't want to.
Well, with your, with your indulgence, I just, I just.
Wait until you're acknowledged by the chairperson to speak and just so that we can keep the conversation moving forward. And, uh, if the chair, if the chairwoman would acknowledge you or the chairman would acknowledge you, then you can have an opportunity to provide your comment.
Uh, is, am I still the chair? I thought I saw Steve, but it looks like it's back to me.
Has rejoined.
I am here by phone, but I'm having trouble to video. So if Laura could keep going, that'd be good.
Sure. Um, so I do, I, I do want to keep the dialogue right now between the board. I appreciate the assistance. Um, we do have a really heavy agenda to get through. I understand we want to try to work through these changes so we can re-advertise. I appreciate that. Um. You know, present it if you want to look for the most recent ordinance.
Yep, I have it in front.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um. I see that. Yep.
So.
Right. So if you scroll down, I don't think that we need to worry about the fraternity and sorority, um, item that was added. And, um, I think that item G is probably good. Um, provisions of this section limiting size of gatherings only apply to residential properties, municipal property and municipal parks. Um, and that they do not apply to non-residential properties, business locations, public and private schools. There's RPR programming, Welsh Pool and the events. Um, again, it's not exempting like at other sports organizations. So Center Soccer Association would not be exempted under this, under this writing. Um.
So we can add that as a friendly amendment.
Um, yeah, if we, if we want to do that, um, if, if, you know.
I think this is a good framework. I would want to expand that, um, to not just the park recreation program, I mean, and Welsh Pool. Um, but to those, um, and, uh, similar organized, um, outdoor recreation.
So.
That's fine.
Uh, one option could be, I can withdraw the amendment and we can give this as advice to Mr. Buboka to include some input from the board.
My feeling is that if we want to advertise this for public hearing, we need to have pretty strong advice. So I think that if we said, add all of the items with the change in the numbers that we have agreed on, remove item F and remove Welsh Pool and add in other sporting organizations. I think that might do it. But I don't think that we could leave it too open-ended.
That's fine with me.
I think you just covered it really well, Laura. Um, and so just to clarify that religious functions would include outdoor church services. I know there's several that are happening.
Right. I agree with that completely. Okay. So does somebody want to provide? Look at me, I'm trying to move your screen presentation. I need to like scroll up right now. Oh, brother. Does somebody want to provide us with a coherent motion, um, utilizing that, that document? Um, to make these changes. So Dave knows what to advertise.
Okay. So I'll move that we add a limitation on gathering size section, which follows ordinance number 2145 as passed by the state college borough with amending the, the indoor and outdoor limits to 25 and 50 people. Striking off item number 5F and amending item 5G to allow for religious functions specifically mentioning outdoor churches and allowing for private sports activities in outdoor settings. How about that?
And Welsh Pool.
And Welsh Pool.
This is Patty and I second that.
Great. Good job working through that, you guys. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, so I'm going to call for a vote on the motion. And after we vote, I'm going to hand the meeting back over to Steve. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no.
Oh.
Okay, it looks like the motion passes four to one. Okay, and Steve, the ball's yours.
Okay, thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
I don't know what happened, but I ended up having to reboot my computer and log in about three times to get back in, but I'm here. Okay, so at this point, we have a still have the ordinance on the table. However, I think this is a significant enough change that we would have to move to continue the public hearing to the next meeting or order for a vote on that. Do you agree with that, Dave?
I do.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I had another amendment. Should we do that?
And see where. Yes. Yeah, we want to do that before we continue the public hearing.
So the amendment would be to amend the exceptions for the wearing of face coverings due to medical conditions. Again, I'm moving that we provide this exception this exception only if the person provides documentation from a licensed medical professional of such medical, mental health or disability preventing the wearing of a face covering. And in the event that the person provides that same documentation immediately or within five days, that the citation shall not be issued.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, seeing no second. There is no motion. So. So is there anything else before or for discussion before we continue the hearing? Okay, then would someone like to or yeah, let's take a motion to continue the hearing to the next meeting.
I Laura will move that we continue the public hearing to our next meeting.
Second, Lisa.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to continue the public hearing to September twenty first. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And now I would like a motion to extend our temporary ordinance through September twenty first.
So move, Lisa.
Laura seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Okay, so we will continue then on the twenty first with the amendments that have been made tonight. Or I guess it's one amendment. The others are minor, but they'll be included. So. Okay. Then I think I'm going to ask, does the board want to take a five minute recess or just power forward?
I'm okay with powering through.
What's that?
I said, Patty said, keep going. You said you said a rest. Okay, I don't feel strongly. So that's fine. If you need a rest. Need to refill my water.
Yeah.
Well, let's take let's take five minutes and then we'll finish in the next three hours.
Steve, what happened to your internet?
I don't know. It just suddenly Zoom meeting went off. And I tried to connect three or four times. It wouldn't work. And so then I got on my phone and then I rebooted the computer. Adopting the capital improvement budget for the years twenty twenty one through twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Mr. Kevin. So, sorry, without belaboring this too much, since the board's had several opportunities to review the draft document, but this was authorized for advertisement for public hearing at the last regular meeting on August seventeenth. The capital improvement program budget has been presented by the township manager and reviewed by the board at two special meetings prior to the August seventeenth regular meeting. A virtual road tour was conducted where proposed street projects were reviewed. All the changes that have been incorporated by the board at the special meetings as well as on August seventeenth have been worked into the final document that's presented for your adoption and consideration this evening by resolution. Staff is recommending that the board adopt the resolution this evening.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if anyone in the public cares to address the board on the capital improvement program, this will be the time. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion.
I Laura move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution adopting the capital improvement program budget for the years twenty twenty one through twenty twenty five.
This is Patty and I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or any questions?
I just wanted to ask Steve, this is Lisa. Was the housing survey pushed back? I couldn't remember where we left that. And it looked like I thought we had pushed it back. And it looked like it was in the same place, but I could be remembering that incorrectly.
The the housing survey, which I believe appears in in the program year twenty twenty two, the board's last discussion was to leave that where it is for now, but revisit it in the CIP discussions next year.
Okay.
At least that's what my notes reflect.
I think that's what we ended up with was that would we have another chance to take a look at the timing. So.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I was just going to reiterate what I said in the work sessions with the the calculations fixed a little bit. It did bring down that deficit and debt by the end of the final year of the CIP. I regret that it wasn't more and hopefully do, you know, revisit some of the specifics during the budget discussions.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, I will call for a vote. This is a resolution, so we roll call.
This is presented as Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty six. Ms. Denini?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the chairman and secretary to execute an agreement with Center County for the receipt of CARES Act County Relief Block Grant Funding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the board has with the agenda this evening a copy of the resolution that's been advertised for public hearing. As Mr. Miller indicated, it authorizes the chairman and secretary to execute an agreement with Center County for the reimbursement or the receipt of an amount up to one hundred and eighty three thousand one hundred and fifty eight dollars in federal CARES Act funding for a variety of eligible pandemic related expenditures. The county's determined our allocation based on census data, and there are some stipulations that are described further in the agreement relative to the utilization of that fund, as well as what some prohibitions are or prohibited expenditures are. Staff met this morning and we've been able to determine where we currently are at with our eligible expenses under this program. We've also identified a few COVID nineteen related expenditures that we plan on incurring between now and the end of the agreement period, which expires at the end of this calendar year, although the county's requested to have the their reimbursement receipts in hand by no later than October thirty first. So we're going to work as hard as we can to get all of those expenditures finalized by that October thirty first due date. The the full text of the agreements appended as an exhibit to the resolution and staff's recommending adoption.
Thank you, Dave. This is a public hearing, so if there's any one from the public that cares to address the board, this will be a time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask if we have a motion.
I Laura move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution approving an agreement with Center County for the receipt of CARES Act County Relief Block Grant Block Grant Funding.
This is Patty and I second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. This will be a roll call vote.
This is presented as Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty seven. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Denini?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is stormwater utility fee ordinance authorization for a public hearing. This I asked Dave Madrecker to introduce this. And there are several questions that were in the agenda that we should discuss tonight. And then we're asked if we're ready to schedule a public hearing, there is a time on Wednesday, September twenty third recommended. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Provided within your agenda is a copy of the draft ordinance that we will take a look at. You previously were provided a presentation by our consultant at your August seventeenth regular meeting. There are a number of outstanding items, as the chairman mentioned, that the board may wish to discuss tonight. After some discussion, the recommended motion is that the board authorize advertisement of a public hearing on the proposed stormwater utility fee. And the proposed date and time is Wednesday, September twenty third at six P M. At that time, our consultant will join us and that is, you know, an evening dedicated just to this topic and discussion by the board. So some of the items for consideration tonight that were left as outstanding policy issues at our presentation included whether or not the board was interested in establishing a billing unit based on one thousand square foot of impervious area or based on an E R U, equivalent residential unit. And we'll we can come back and discuss that. Another policy question is whether or not we want to establish a savings account or set aside funding to purchase equipment in the future to perform pipe inspections and cleaning in house. The current established program and level of service indicates that those services will be contracted for the first seven years of the program. The current funding for the level of service includes purchase of equipment. And to do that, it includes the setting aside certain funds. So there was much discussion at the advisory committee. We made a number of changes from contracting for two years to seven years. You know, we also talked about a future benefit cost analysis to determine if it wasn't our best in new contracting or purchase. So the question really at this time is whether or not the fee structure should include a set aside anticipating the purchase of those two pieces of equipment. Another item for discussion that we want to think about is whether we want to keep the geographic or neighborhood wide pipelining within the transportation improvement fund. So in the TIF right now are two different, I'll call them line items for pipe rehabilitation. One is to repair or line pipes that are part of a paving project. The other program that we started a few years ago is trying to address deteriorating infrastructure on a geographic or neighborhood wide basis. Prioritizing neighborhoods by those with the oldest, most deteriorated corrugated metal pipe. So one of the things the board wants to think about is, do you want to keep that entire pipelining program within the TIF? Or do you want to transition it and or on day one include that funding through a stormwater fee? The other item for discussion is whether or not the board is interested in a credit policy, a program to provide credits back to property owners that demonstrate certain activities such as installing B M Ps or best management practices, groundwater recharge, other thing that would help offset the fee. So to kind of help put some framework to that, if you'd like, I can go back and review some of the slides that we looked at uh, on those topics where we can just kind of open it up for discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, do board members want to review the slides on that or do you feel comfortable starting the discussion at this point?
I feel comfortable starting the discussion unless we feel like in the discussion, we want to see a slide.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, looks like there's no objection to that, so. So I guess we'll just start with the discussion. I did want to note that we do have several people that I'm sure are here for this topic. And so I will, you know, take public input on this as well because this is a, a topic that we've, uh, you know, presented to the public and will be in the public hearing, but this is a, a chance for input. If, uh, someone wants to make suggestions as we go along. So, uh, but I'll start with if any board members want to address any of the items, uh, specifically. Or if not, we can just go through the three items that they've had and then do them one at a time.
And then also the ERU versus, um, the thousand square feet. So like, that's not in one of the three.
Right, so that'll be a, another item that we really should, uh, discuss tonight if, uh, so we have a, a direction before the public hearing, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought I mentioned that first. I missed it.
No, you've mentioned it.
You mentioned it, it wasn't on the, the list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have strong feelings about that one. I have strong feelings that I would like it to be as closely tied with actual reality as possible. If we move forward with this fee, so I really do not want an ERU billing system. I really prefer that it's tied to the actual square footage as closely as possible. And then that the credits, um, are related also to what happens in reality. That's it.
Okay. Yeah, so we, we can just start, start with that. Uh, yeah, with the, I guess I, I don't feel strongly one way or the other. I think that both, both, uh, there are good arguments for either one of those, uh, systems. Uh, and I don't think that there's going to be a huge difference from one to the other. Uh, so I, I tend to go with the ERU because I think it might be simpler for, for, uh, management. But I don't really have a problem with going with the, uh, square footage either. I think there'd be a little more, uh, manip-, you know, handling of numbers, a little more time involved in calculations. But I think that the, as Laura said, I think the, you know, it then it gets closer to the reality of who's producing the stormwater that should be handled, so.
Dave, could you bring up that particular slide?
Sure.
And I'll point out when we have the slide up, I can't see everybody waving, so if you have a comment, just come in and announce who you are and make your comment.
So I'm going to get a slide 20. So close your eyes while I speed back. So is this what, a starting point for the discussion?
Yeah, this is the one I was thinking of.
Okay, so under, you know, under the fixed billing unit, which is the second over here, I'll start with that. Um, we calculate the square footage on a parcel. And then we round it to the nearest thousand square foot increment. And then you would get charged based on the square footage. On the ERU scenario, all residential properties taking the mean, we get the average for a residential unit is 3,097 square feet. So all residential properties are charged one ERU. If it's not a single-family residence and we're using the ERU scenario, you would calculate the square footage. In this case, um, this commercial property had 80,000 square feet. You divide by 3,097 and this property is billed 26 ERUs. So in the fee structure, if you establish an ERU, it's going to be a certain fee. And if you establish a thousand square feet, it would be a certain fee. So then, you get to the, the same end, but the way you get there depending on what type of parcel you have, it affects you differently whether it's an ERU or square footage.
Question, Dave. Um, ERU, that's a, that's a, a whole number, correct? The 3,090, so you can't split that up into a half a billing unit.
Right, you, you get billed by the ERU, that's correct.
Not 1.5, it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, whatever.
Yes, you, you round to the nearest, uh, whole, rounded the nearest preferred ERU, correct?
So what I'm seeing is that I think I'm, uh, you know, now that I understand things a little better, I'm possibly aligning with Supervisor Denini in the sense that, if I, all residential properties under the ERU system pay the same amount, uh, and not according, not based on how much they are paving or not. And so in that sense, I would possibly prefer the fixed billing unit, which, um, doesn't, you know, does give you an incentive to not pay as much.
And then I could show you, if you're interested, some examples that we went through with actual parcels, but I, eh, I'm confident the board has a handle on it, but if you do want to see an example, I'll go to slide, uh, 26.
Now go ahead and take it to that slide. I think that would be.
Okay, so the example that we saw was pretty much both of these examples are in the non-growth area. Um, I, I'm going to start again on, on the right-hand side. So this is an example of a long driveway with a house in the non-growth area. It has 20,159 square feet. Under the ERU scenario, they get billed one because it's a residence. Under the thousand-square-foot scenario, they would get billed 20 units. Over here, again in the non-growth area, we have a long driveway that is shown in red that goes to residences. The blue are agricultural related impervious areas. In this case, the entire length of the driveway going to the home was broke out and classified for the residents. The total impair, impervious area on this lot is 130,000, let's say 131,000 square feet. Of that, 70,000 are in blue for ag. 60,700 are in red for residential. Under an ERU scenario, 24. Because once again, all this in red counts as one ERU and then that gets broken out. Under a thousand-square-foot scenario, it would be 131 units. So those are, I guess, kind of extreme examples. But if you looked at this and said it's in the residential area, you know, it basically doesn't matter how much impervious area you have. If it's a, if it's classified as a residence, under the ERU, you get billed one. Whereas under the billing units, it really does matter how much impervious area you have. And over here, you can see the impact on this area by saying everything in red is one ERU as opposed to all of it being the same color. Um, under a, under a billing unit scenario. I don't know if those examples were helpful or not, but those were the ones that we had in our presentation.
Really, one of the reasons I'm really feeling strongly about it is because I'm looking at being as fair as possible if we're going to utilize a fee structure and I just feel like actual, representing actual reality is more fair. And, uh, I just have one question. I think your example answered it. But gravel is seen as impervious, like a gravel driveway is the same as a paved driveway, right?
Correct.
Thanks. I think Mark had his hand up. I don't know, Steve, if you're taking comment.
I'm sorry, I have my sound off. Yeah, Mark, uh, so you raised your hand.
Mark Uncle, 770 Bloomsweath Drive. Good evening, board members and staff. I'm present this evening to request board members to lay any further action on scheduling a public hearing on an ordinance to implement a stormwater fee. I would ask that the board members consider the following. Despite a three-year process to study the implementation of a stormwater fee and the efforts of township staff to publicize the study, township residents are unaware of the financial impacts of the proposed stormwater fee. They have no idea how much or for what they will be writing a check each year. Property owners have not engaged to any meaningful degree in any phase of the study. An example of this lack of engagement was the town hall meeting held on June 24th where property owners received notice to join a virtual meeting which was poorly attended. There appeared to be more staff, board members and consultants than township residents. Clearly, property owners do not understand the scope of this proposed fee, the increasing annual cost and how these costs will be paid. Whether the board chooses, chooses the ERU or the per-thousand-square-foot basis, property owners are clearly not informed. Finally, this is very poor timing. With people struggling with employment, childcare, educational and healthcare issues, along with the inability to have a dialogue with the board face-to-face, the timing to consider a major issue such as this feels a little sneaky. What is the urgency of taking the next step of a public hearing on this ordinance? Do you really think two weeks, property owners in the township are going to be more informed? Has the board truly heard the community on this matter? I urge board members to delay further action on advancing the stormwater fee ordinance until such time as property owners in the township are informed of the totality of the proposed, uh, of the proposed, this proposal, both in scope and financial impact through a series of open houses, property-specific calculations and when public meetings resume face-to-face. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thanks, Mark. Walter Parker? Yeah, you have a comment?
Yes, I'd like to add my, my thoughts here. I think that it would be wise of the, uh, the members of the board to think long and hard about the adoption of this type of ordinance. This is, whether you call it a fee or not, it's a, it's a long-term tax increase that is ostensibly forever. You're talking about adding this fee onto the cost of, uh, the already, uh, numbers that that all of this, their township residents pay to the township. And I think from that standpoint, this should be considered, uh, very seriously as for what it actually is. It's a long-term tax increase and it can be, it can be called anything, but that's what it turns out to be. And it's going to impact every one of us for a long, long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom? You're muted, Tom.
Good evening, my name's Tom Songer. I was a member of the Ferguson Township Stormwater Advisory Committee. Uh, I own non-residential property in Ferguson Township, but I was a resident of Ferguson Township from 1972 to 1992. I support the, what the staff is doing and looking at the future and determining what the capital needs will be with respect to maintaining and replacing deteriorated storm sewers as well as issues relating to the MS4 permits and, and other aspects of stormwater management. Having a good plan for future capital expenditures is a wise thing to do. And looking at the numbers we've been presented with from the consultant, the annual budget for stormwater fees averages $1,770,000 per year over the eight years from 2021 through 2028. This amount personnel costs average over $500,000 per year. All the costs relating to the maintenance and replacement of storm sewers, MS4 permits and other things relating to road maintenance, in my opinion, can be paid for from the Transportation Improvement Fund, which is the way it's being paid for now. If the township needs more money in terms of doing the needed improvements and can't fund the improvements within the current TIF budget, then I think the township needs to make a case for raising taxes. But we don't need another separate tax or fee, uh, as, uh, the speakers before me have, have said. It's my understanding that the township currently has no debt other than the debt for the new maintenance building. So I would think that they have room, uh, even to borrow more money if, if money's, funds are needed for transportation improvements. The key to a good program for needed road and storm sewer reconstruction going forward is to have a good plan. Having a good 10-year schedule as to what projects are needed to be done, uh, is very important. These projects can be ranked and so that you know on a year-by-year basis what the budget should be to make these improvements. It's not just storm sewers, it's also the condition of the streets, what streets have to be repaid, what curbing needs replaced, et cetera. So there's many more things than just storm sewers that need to be considered. In order to do, uh, videoing of storm sewers and flushing of storm sewer lines, I would suggest that the borough could contract with local, uh, sources such as, uh, Springburne Walker Joint Authority or the UAJAA. People like that already have flush trucks. A, uh, a flush truck costs on the order of $500,000. A video truck costs $500,000. That's a million dollars worth of equipment. I know David said initially, you're not going to buy that. But I don't think it should ever be bought when, when local sources are available to provide that service. But it's not only the equipment, it's maintaining that equipment and it's putting operators, skilled operators to run that equipment. Not just anyone can do that. Costs a lot of money to employ a person nowadays. And, uh, typically with municipal employees, as, uh, they aren't laid off in the winter time. Uh, the people who work for Granola Baker and other contractors like that, their people get laid off in the winter, but not municipalities. So I think, I think you could contract, uh, and get this same work done much less expensively than you can by trying, uh, trying to do it yourself. I mean, uh, if, if you don't believe that, then what's going to be next? Is the township going to buy their own paving equipment and re, and repave their roads and so forth? So, uh, I, I ask you to take a good, hard look at what these annual costs are going to be and how to reduce that. Furthermore, it's going to take a lot of administration to administer this ordinance. We just heard how things could be misinterpreted depending on the property and so forth. It's going to result in a lot of people appealing decisions that are made, uh, relative, people are going to ask for credits. All this is going to take a lot of time and, and a lot of expense. We know what the tax structure currently is and as I said previously, uh, if you need more money. if you need more money, make a case for it. And I guess you have to raise taxes. So based on what I stated above, I'm not in favor of a stormwater fee ordinance and believe that all the stormwater work that is needed to be done can be done within the existing Transportation Improvement Fund. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So I guess we're at this point, I think we have the questions for the board. We hadn't resolved whether we'd be looking at, uh, or which system we want to look at or funding system. Again, there, there's also the question being raised by the speakers of, do we want to go forward with this at all? And then we have the three other questions. So I guess I'll ask if anyone has any comments to proceed here. If not, I'll make mine and we'll go from there. I, I'm looking for board comments right now, so.
Steve, I'd like to hear your comments and then I may have some comments.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess my, my comments are that I think we should move forward with this. Uh, I realize that, you know, there's a question about how much people are informed. I think we've had a lot of public discussion of a number of meetings. We had the you know, the public town hall meeting. And it's true that not a lot of people showed up, but it was well advertised and people had the opportunity to be here. My feeling is this is a better way to fund this than taxes. Because a tax increase, if we go with a property tax increase, the the tax will be based on the value of property, which may be totally unrelated to the amount of impact on the stormwater system. So I think that a stormwater fee places the costs where the, or places the, the fee where the costs are generated. Uh, if you go with a tax increase, other than property tax, for instance, uh, you know, our other main taxes, income tax, then your taxing is totally unrelated because it's not related to anything to do with property. Businesses don't pay an income tax. But businesses have large parking lots. The property tax, again, I think there are valuable properties that don't generate a lot of stormwater. We have these costs are being incurred. Right now, we are paying them through taxes. I don't think that's the best way to do it. There are a lot more that will be incurred over time as the system ages. And I think that's, that's the key thing we have to address is an aging system that will get more expensive if we don't address it. So that, that's my feeling. I'm not real strong on the ERU versus thousand square foot. I think the ERU would be a lot simpler to, to manage. And you also then don't, although with a thousand square feet, I'm not sure how much you'd see how, houses next door to each other having significant differences, but you will have some cases where there are significant differences. They are justified by different amount of impervious so that I, again, I don't feel strongly on that. So I guess those are my initial comments and like to hear from the rest of the board, but I do think we should schedule a public hearing.
I guess I do have some comments. First, I'm definitely not decided yet about this fee. I've been in the process the whole way along and I'm still not sure. I agree with a lot of what Steve said. One of the reasons why I was willing to explore this is that it does seem like a much more fair way to handle the costs of this system than would be either income or property tax. You'll probably hear me talk a lot about fairness. That's what I'm, that's one of my driving goals in, in looking at this. And so like Steve said, if you're looking at income tax, people with parking lots are not going to be paying. Folks, you know, that could be lower income are going to be shouldering that burden. If it were the case that the ERU system was so much simpler and there was no discernible difference from in using square footage, um, I guess I would consider it. Um, but first I would want to look at being more refined in what we look at as the billing unit for square footage as opposed to just jumping to the ERU. I think it, it, speaking to the, you know, a lot of people don't know about this. That's really, it's somewhat true and very frustrating because during the battle of the tolls, that was something that a lot of people that were against that really talked about how they did not know about it until very late in the game and were repeatedly told it's too late now. Unfortunately, as much as you try in local government, a lot of people are just really late to the game. I, I'm very open to pushing this information more, uh, trying to get some media coverage of it. But I do think that we're looking at either a fee or a tax increase. And I think if we frame it that way, we're going to get folks a lot more interested and involved. So I would be, I would be supportive of being very open about that um, and getting more people to understand what we're looking at. So that's it for now. Thanks.
Comments from other board members?
I'll go, Steve. So generally, I'm just not supportive of at this time of anything that's going to increase cost to the public, either through a fee or through a tax, considering the circumstances we're in right now, but also specifically with this program, um, there are just a number of questions that I've not had sufficiently answered and also just approaches that I've disagreed with. I probably, if I'd been on the board, wouldn't have wanted to do the feasibility study because I, I am not convinced of the idea of stormwater as a fee to begin with as a utility. So I, I start from there. So when looking at how the study was laid out, I was concerned because the assessment of what the actual costs are going to be is done after the fee is implemented. So we, we can only estimate what the, what the infrastructure looks like, where we expect problems. And I wish it had been considered to try to fund that equipment earlier. So to have that assessment done prior to imposing the fee so that there is a better idea of the condition of the infrastructure. And just generally, as I mentioned during the CIP approval, I was concerned when we went through those work sessions that there just was not, I felt, a considerable effort to restrain and/or cut back spending given the circumstances we're in. I understand that our taxes haven't been hit. We haven't seen a real decline, but that doesn't mean that people aren't feeling the impact of this pandemic. And so I feel like there needs to be more sensitivity given to the situation that we and residents find themselves in. Even if we don't see it on its face at this point in our, in our tax collection, there is still suffering there. So there is still concerns and as I was thinking about this earlier, you know, just seeing the number of people on this meeting right now, today was the first day of fully remote schooling in Skazee for, in the State College School District for folks who hadn't opted for remote schooling. So I just, I highly doubt that this is the top priority of many people struggling to find childcare and what have you, you know, whatever their problems are right now. I understand that there is a great deal of effort made to try to publicize this and it is unfortunate that this pandemic timing has aligned with this process. So that's, that is, that's, you know, greatly unfortunate. I wish, again, you know, I wasn't on the board when a lot of this was taking place, a lot of these decisions and steps were being made. And so it's difficult to go back and second guess decisions that were made, but as coming in at this point, you know, I wonder, you know, were there considerations for finding these funds within the budget? We were able to move around different road projects as we, you know, drove along the roads and said, oh, this road looks okay. Let's move this back to, you know, four years from now. I feel like there is more flexibility in some of the priorities that are currently funded and maybe taking a more global look at those things, a freeze on hiring for a year, a freeze on vehicle replacements or purchases for a year, shifting road maintenance projects back twelve, eighteen months in their cycle and not, you know, not making these things permanent, but you know, considering some, some cost savings and some measures being taken to find this money. Somebody else already brought up the other couple of points I wanted to make was that looking at the overall totals that are estimated to be brought in. If it's, um, you know, one point seven million or two million, two million a year, then you're looking at at least a half a million dollars in salaries. Adding in then the total of the credits that would be taken out, I see forty percent here. I know some places offer up to fifty percent. You know, I'm just not sure that that this is adding up. It seems like a lot of overhead and, uh, management, additional expenses for what would be coming out of it, considering the amount too, that the township already spends on stormwater. So in the CIP, I want to estimate there was eight hundred thousand some this year. And for other years, next year is an outlier. It's a lot higher because of Park Hills Drainage Way. But those, those fees, those, um, those amounts are already budgeted for in there. So I, I wish there would have been more effort to reallocate funds to, I understand that this is a priority. This is vital infrastructure and does need attention. So you know, designating a separate fund for these, for these projects is smart. That would make sense. Um, I just agree, disagree with the premise of funding it this way.
Okay, thank you. Out of your percentage, either if you have any comments to make at this point or?
Yeah, I think, uh, I, it shades off, uh, what different people have said, I agree with. So uh, I think I agree with the fact that the fairness idea that Laura mentioned, which is that people who have more paved surface should pay more because they are causing the stormwater. And so we need to, uh, address that and I would rather have a fee rather than a flat tax. But having said that, our, our funding is from the general budget. Having said that, I also want the program to be revenue neutral. And so what I want is that the amount of money that's coming in is rebated out in some form of, you know, some formula, um, as a property tax rebate to, to people so that eventually it's revenue neutral. And, um, and I do think, and, and the reason is that when I did campaign, there were several, especially senior citizens who were concerned with living on a fixed budget and the, uh, I was told that our taxation rates are the highest, which under certain, you know, interpretations is true or not true, but it's pretty much on the higher side, shall we say, among uh, our neighboring townships. And so given that, this would be an additional amount. And to be honest, I share some of the concerns that were raised by some of our citizens who came here and say things where they said, well, they don't even know what the amount is. And I think if we want to get public input, we perhaps should at least provide people with the information with respect to how much are we really talking about that they, they have to pay extra? Uh, and then we can, um, have the public hearing where people can get that information and come back and tell us this works or not. So this is what my thinking is right now that I would like a sort of a fee structure, but, um, make it revenue neutral by giving people a rebate with some combination of, of tax rebates. And also provide, uh, people much more precise information about what is the burden, uh, so that people can come in with their comments. Uh, if, you know, if it is twenty-five dollars a year for me, I possibly might not care. But if it is two thousand five hundred, I might care more. So at, at this point, I don't really have a sense of what those numbers are. And so I would like some of that to be disseminated to our citizens.
May I just make a quick comment on the revenue neutrality point? Because this, this has kind of been an emerging theme that's come up throughout the last three years that we've been discussing this. And I think the issue, part of the concern that I have, Mr. Mitra, is that, you know, the, while conceptually revenue neutrality may seem more equitable, you're actually creating more inequity in some respects than you are addressing what, what may be, you know, what you're trying to achieve. Meaning let's take the, you know, the application of the, of a stormwater impact fee on tax-exempt organizations like Penn State, for example. They would not be able to be eligible while they would be under this program obligated to pay a fee and depending on that billing structure would be between forty thousand dollars a year in the first year and up to eighty thousand in year eight of the program. And that's offset, of course, by credits, of course, but you know, they would not be entitled to any rebate or any kind of, of return on that, uh, if there was a revenue neutral process, I think. And please understand everybody on the call, my, my role, Dave's role in this, the consultant's role in this is not to advocate for or against an impact fee. I think we made that clear from the beginning. But it's primarily to provide you with the information to make an informed decision. And I think what's borne out over the last several years of analysis is that we have this, not just these unfunded mandates that are coming from state and federal permit requirements like our MS four obligations and Chesapeake Bay pollutant reduction strategy requirements that necessitate capital improvement, improvements, et cetera. But there are a lot of other things that we're looking at being immediate needs, our aging infrastructure, capital repairs. Dave talked about the, the pipelining, et cetera. So you know, we've identified throughout this exercise, regardless of whether the board decides elects to implement a fee or not, or elects to go in a different direction uh, to generate revenue or offset it with, with cuts, is that we now have a, a very accurate roadmap of where our issues are and where our priorities are. And you can, you can modify that level of service, of course, and you could say that we're going to, you know, prioritize storm pipe relining in, in this area, or we're going to look at urban infrastructure versus rural. But all that comes at, at a, at an opportunity cost. All of that, you're, you're necessarily deciding what you either want to defer or delay, which may add to the cost of repair, replacement in a future program year. Unfortunately, there's no real magic button with all of this. But I think conceptually, revenue neutrality is something that I would be opposed to, that I wouldn't recommend you would pursue because I think that is, it kind of defeats the purpose, which is we've identified these additional that we're going to have over the coming program years. This really isn't just a matter, although equity and fairness in application is a critical component for the board to consider. That's really not the only, uh, reason that the board elected to pursue this feasibility study a number of years ago. It was because we were aware, we identified, uh, these pending improvements, this aging infrastructure and these this aging infrastructure and these additional costs incurred. So, you know, kind of regardless of how, uh, that gets paid for, it's a, it's an additional cost beyond we're currently budgeting and beyond we're currently doing that we need to find a way to address. So revenue neutrality is, is problematic for me, um, as having to kind of manage the budget and present it to you all, I think it, it raises more concerns, uh, frankly, than it does address problems. I mean, I'm sensitive to the economic conditions, certainly in the wake of the pandemic. But even prior to that, with, um, you know, senior citizens on fixed income, lower income residents, et cetera. Um, unfortunately, a, a revenue neutral proposition, I think in addition to the inequities it creates, also is, is, uh, kind of dilutes the purpose of consideration of a fee.
Yeah, it's just a quick follow-up. So the, you know, I understand that, and you know, for those who are not paying taxes, I'm, I'm fine with, uh, you know, them not getting the, uh, rebates back. And it's, it's not going to be everyone's revenue neutrality. I don't mean that everyone is going to pay the same taxes as they were before. It's, uh, you know, overall, uh, it will be revenue neutral on average over the whole township. That's, uh, sort of where I was trying to go. But I understand the issues that you raised with revenue neutrality.
I, I think you run into a problem. I mean, since we're proposing this to fund a lot of new expenses. If you go revenue neutral, what you're doing is saying we're adding expenses and adding no income. Uh, I would say as far as the property tax, we have the lowest in the area, not, not the highest. I, I think there's, there's a perception that we have very high taxes. And it's true that our income tax is, is high compared to other municipalities. But our property tax is significantly lower than any of the other municipalities around here, which is why I would propose that if we're not doing this through a fee, that we'd be doing it through a property tax rather than an income tax. But, uh,
Then one of the reasons why that was not very interesting to the board back in the day when we talked about exploring the stormwater fee is that that would mostly impact farmers, some of whom have plenty of impermeable, but many who do not. So that's one of the reasons why we have a lower property tax, because right down to our core mission is to preserve agriculture. And if we want to do that, having folks that have cropland, hundreds of acres of cropland, bearing the burden for many acres of, um, impermeable parking lots is not a fair way or a possible way to go about preserving farming way of life. So, um, and like Steve said, income tax is also not a very fair way of addressing this issue. And that's why I originally, if you take as a priori, the need to increase revenue, that's why I was interested in looking at the stormwater fee as a possibility. Um, and I also am still interested in answering these questions. Like I said, I still don't know what I'm going to vote for eventually. But I know the more details and the more concrete information I have, the better of a decision I can make. And I would agree with Presenjit that, um, it would be helpful. And I think we talked about this before, and I think Dave Modricer even ran some numbers for us before of what the actual fee would be for different kinds of properties utilizing exact examples, so we can wrap our minds around what homeowners would be looking at. Um, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Modricer?
At, at some point when you'd like, I can again, share some slides that talked about the different, um, rate options with and without the scenarios of equipment or the transportation fund on both the ERU or the square foot basis. So we do have a couple of slides that, you know, might be helpful for that discussion. Yeah. First, I would like to ask Patty, did you have any comments, uh, I think other, other board members? I'll look it in.
No, it was the, the beauty of going last is that you just sort of agree with all the different points that are being made. Um, but I do, I am torn. I, I do understand. I have the same concern about the, um, the cost to residents, but it also, at the same time, it also feels irresponsible to ignore, um, the situation at hand. So I, I, I guess the fee seems to me the best way to handle it fairly.
Yeah, at, at this point, I think we're getting late. And I, I'm going to raise, the first question is going to be, do we want to schedule a public hearing for the 23rd? That was the recommendation from staff and what we had discussed previously. If we want to do that, then we can iron out the other issues, the bullet points there. I don't see a need to discuss those and then say, no, we're not going to do a public hearing. So I, I think my first question for the board is, do we want to schedule a public hearing for the 23rd on this?
I'll give my opinion on this. I'm always willing to share my opinion. Um, I think we should move forward with the public hearing. Uh, the reason being, uh, it's a helpful way to get folks' attention. And it's a way to devote a specific time period to talking about this and get folks' opinions on the public record. That said, I have no desire to race across the finish line on this. So I'm very open to scheduling that time. I want to hear from residents. I want folks to understand we're taking this seriously, and I also don't want to rush. So that's my thought on that.
I, I'm in the same boat.
I agree.
Okay, so I guess the, the question is then, it sounds like we have a majority that are wanting to go ahead and schedule the public hearing. So do we want to work out the details that we would be presenting? Because this is a public hearing on an ordinance. So the staff need guidelines to write the ordinance prior to a public hearing.
We could at least take a stab at it, Steve. If it looks like the conversation is just going nowhere, then maybe we should pause. Um, but we haven't really even gotten to the majority of the questions yet, so.
That, that was why I wanted to, to find out of where we stand on that. So I guess the, the first question is, did we have any guidance for staff as far as the type of billing? The ERU versus a thousand square foot?
I guess I would lean toward what Laura was saying. Is, there is no, um, income, uh, cutoff for this. So nobody is able to get out of paying this fee because of low income. Is that right?
Uh, it's currently assessed to properties based on square footage. So you, I guess, if you own property and you have impervious area greater than, you know, a thousand square feet, then it applies to you. As, as it's currently written.
I mean, I, I've stated all my issues, but I guess this would be the best way to assess it. Would be the square footage.
And Dave Modricer, I would be interested in, in understanding if what Steve said, how accurate that is. So if I'm looking at, you know, a McMansion with 15 pave patios and, you know, a lot of impermeable, and then I'm looking at a cottage with a small driveway, if it really is barely any difference, I wouldn't mind entertaining the ERU system if it's way less administrative overhead. So I'm, I'm really interested in understanding how refined the square footage billing system would be. Where, and I know you as an engineer and having a, a really good handle on that kind of thing, you can probably imagine that, me not so much. So maybe for the public hearing, if we can explore that a little bit, that'd be, that'd be helpful. But at this point, I'm still about the square footage.
With that, Mr. Nene is, uh, not issues, I guess, but considerations that needs to be given is if we're advertising for a public hearing, the ordinance needs to be substantively in place the way it's going to be acted on. What I, what I propose doing, uh, would be to schedule the public hearing, which is, as Mr. Miller indicated for the 23rd, that it would be a standalone agenda item. This would be the only focus of it, probably, well, what I would intend to do would be similar to what we did for the open house, meaning send a postcard mailer out to residents. It's a very low cost item, um, inviting them to, to participate and to engage. Uh, but the, the structure of the ordinance, uh, it's very critical that it includes what that billing unit methodology looks like. Because if you go ERU or a thousand square foot of impervious, that's going to direct a lot of the, you know, the framework for what that, that regulation looks like. So I think that, that's one of the main questions that the board ought to provide directions on tonight. And Dave can correct me if I'm wrong. The difference between the ERU versus the thousand square foot billing unit is relatively nominal. It's not huge sweeps in either directions. Um, there is probably not a whole lot of discernible, uh, difference between the two in terms of the administrative burden on managing those billing units. In other words, you know, what you're, once those billing units are established, which we already have the data for, uh, and we already have the, you know, all the parcel by parcel impervious layer, uh, through our GIS system. Uh, you know, it's really just a matter of annual upkeep, which would be true whether it be an ERU process or a thousand square foot impervious process. There are some small inequities, or small maybe relative, but there are some inequities that are created under each of the circumstances. I think, you know, the boards outlined well, the thousand square foot model and how that, um, you know, may be more equitable in some cases than the equivalent residential unit, meaning, you know, you're paying based on, you know, very much down to the square footage, what your impact to the stormwater system might look like. And then, of course, you're eligible for credit on top of that. If you, in that scenario, it tends to, uh, raise the costs for agricultural parcels. Um, under an ERU model, it tends to be a little bit less for agricultural parcels, because we would be parsing out their, um, some of their impervious data or their impervious surface to fall under the ERU, uh, model. Meaning there's a, a residential unit, it's at the end of a long, uh, driveway. That driveway may, you know, kind of daisy chain into a number of different farm, farm lanes, but they're just paying one ERU. So we're, we're, we're taking that out of the equation of impervious calculation. Whereas if we were doing the thousand square foot model, that would be included. So there are slight, uh, deviations under each model in terms of how they impact the equity at large. But you're not going to see dramatic swings one way or the other.
Okay. I think, I'm sorry, I think I misled you. I am asking, and I don't know what the board majority is going to be on this, but for me, I'm saying in the ordinance that's advertised, I'm looking at the square footage calculation. I'm, yes, but when we're in the public hearing, I want to talk about what that actually means. So, yeah.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to make a suggestion. It's, uh, after 10:30. And I guess my suggestion is that we schedule a public hearing for October 5th. And we schedule a special meeting for the 23rd to answer the questions that, because I don't think we're going to get through these discussions tonight. I, I think we're going to need a special meeting and then the public hearing, because I don't think we're going to have the information to staff to write the ordinance tonight. That's, that's my feeling on it.
Good to me, Steve.
I agree. I think that's a good idea.
I'm fine too.
Yeah. So, uh, how do you feel, Dave? Would that work for just? Do the, uh, public hearing on the 5th and then?
Is the 5th a regular meeting too?
Yeah, that's our regular meeting. Yeah. But what I'm proposing is we work out the details at, at a special meeting. So that when we have the public hearing, we have all of these things answered going into the meeting.
Yeah, I think that's good. It's just when, and it's a public hearing, we should be prepared for a lot of input. So we should not have a huge agenda other than.
We won't have much other than the budget.
Agenda as light as possible.
No two-day agendas.
You know, relative to timing on this, I mean, I'm, I'm sensitive to, I think, the point that, um, Mark raised earlier about, you know, the, the concern that this may have, public perception, given the conditions and the circumstances that surround this. I think if the board were interested in deferring the program or deferring consideration, it would be, uh, wise to reengage in, meaning you didn't want to just put it to bed and say, never mind, we're not interested in pursuing this any further. It would be wise to continue to engage our consultant and the Stormwater Advisory Committee, because there are some modifications that will need to be made, uh, worked into the program years, worked into the levels of service, uh, worked into just about all components of this program in order to, um, essentially modify the, the, the consideration so that it wouldn't take place until fiscal year 2022. Uh, part of the reason that this is being presented to you in the way that it is is to be sensitive to homeowners associations, condo associations that have to establish their rate structure for the upcoming fiscal year and need to be given enough lead time to modify those rates in order to reflect this additional fee, because there's going to be charges that are assessed to common space that's owned and maintained by HOAs. Um, I, I think that, you know, if you were to say we're going to push this much past October, then you would want to say you're going to push it till the following year, which, with, um, and with that comes that additional cost, that additional engagement, the Stormwater Advisory Committee, and they've been great. I really appreciate all their involvement, not just Tom Songer, but everybody who's been, uh, involved in that from day one. Um, you know, they've been around for this for about two and a half years now. So I would be leery about asking them to, to give much more of their time that they've already given to the township and, and their expertise. Uh, but we can try to make, do what we can. I would anticipate there'd be an additional, um, need to have, have that group convene probably several times throughout the year and have some additional, uh, dialogue and, and modifications, as I said, made to what the program is that's presented. So just to be mindful of that as, as you're proceeding, um, you know, what I proposed under the draft ordinance anyway, would be fiscal year 2021, essentially a six-month proration. Not only do I think does that address some of the sensitivity concerns about economic conditions, but it also is more accurately reflective, I think, of our, of our, uh, need. Meaning we wouldn't be ready to kind of ramp up all, some of these programmatic items, uh, beginning January 1, regardless of, of when that, whether that fee were collected for the full fiscal year for a portion of it. Uh, so there's, there's other opportunities for, uh, the board to maybe address some, certainly not all, some of those economic concerns, uh, in the way that you structure this ordinance and the way that you present, uh, this to, to the general public. But those are just some unsolicited thoughts in a, in a few different directions that I thought I'd provide before you proceed.
Helpful, Dave. Thank you.
Can you just, the homeowners association fees, can you just, um?
So for, um, for some of, I mean, depending on what homeowner association or condo association in the township, and we have quite a few, uh, they range in their, um, obligations from very, very minor to almost nonexistent to quite extensive. Meaning you think about Stonebridge, uh, for example, the planned residential development. Um, you know, they have a, uh, they have a, a significant amount of common open space. Uh, they have a pool, they have, uh, hard courts, et cetera. And maintenance, uh, or the home, the way the stormwater fee is structured is Stonebridge Property Owners Association would receive that, that one bill for that impervious area. And then they would likely divide that up amongst their residents. So they would, you know, take that number, whatever that stormwater fee would be assessed to them, and they would divide that amongst however many property owners are in that association. So they would have to have lead time to adjust their fees for the upcoming fiscal year to reflect that additional cost obligation.
Okay, that's, okay.
Yeah, so, so I guess my, my main question on it, it's, uh, as far as the Yeah, so so I guess my my main question on it, it's as far as the scheduling of a public hearing on the 5th. Do you think that would be timely enough that it wouldn't, that we'd be able to to address those concerns?
I I think, fine, I think the, you know, the, not to say a cutoff date, but you know, one of the the, as we just discussed, something, you know, the deadline to be mindful of is that October timeframe. You could have the public hearing on October 5th, take action on the ordinance on October 19th, your second meeting in October. And if you move forward with it, that would give HOAs enough time to adjust their fees for the upcoming year. If you decided against it, that would give us time to appropriately amend or modify the operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year to reflect, you know, that reality. So I think we would still be in good shape. I would not advise going much past, you know, the first meeting in November at at the very latest, unless you were one looking to defer the decision on the ordinance for another year.
Okay.
In which case it'd be a moot point anyway.
So so I guess my question to the board then is, do we want to schedule a public hearing for October 5th at our regular meeting? And then have also schedule a special meeting for the 23rd and publicize that as much as we can to get as much public input at that time.
Yes.
I would be okay with that.
So would someone want to make a motion that we do that?
I move that we schedule a special meeting for September 23rd and a public hearing for October 5th to discuss and have a hearing on the stormwater fee. This is Patty, a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. I think we've had plenty of discussions. I'll just call for a vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Then I'll I'll do a, you know, a mailer that maybe advertises both of those dates. I presume that the board would want CNET coverage for the September 23rd special meeting. I think we can.
Absolutely.
That, and we could likely accommodate maybe a live stream, assuming they don't have any or live broadcast, assuming they don't have any other, you know, conflicts scheduled for that evening. So I'll work with Cindy Hahn to try to get that coordinated on on our end.
Great. And I would ask if board members have any questions that staff can address ahead of time? Do you send them to either Dave Pabalka or Dave Modrekker so that they can be prepared to address any questions that we would want to be discussing on the 23rd?
Thank you. And ask whether we want the consultant to show up at that meeting too.
That was my question. Yeah, do we want her at both or just one of them?
Per our current engagement with the consultant, Dave, can you, maybe this is just a question for you. Are we, I think we have the, in their scope of work, the attendance at the public hearing, but I.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we we had tentatively penciled her in for the evening of the 23rd or 24th of September. So maybe what we want to do is, you know, we could have that just staff and then have her over for the public hearing. If that makes sense to the manager and the board. Or we could additional virtual meeting and and she could attend both if if you thought it would be helpful.
I'm fine with staff at the 23rd. I think you guys can answer all of our questions.
I think so.
Agreed.
I think so too.
Okay, I think that, yeah, I think the the questions we have, you you will be able to answer as well as the consultant, so. Okay, so that we'll take care of that for tonight. And I think we'll move on.
Just, Steve, I just want to say thank you to the board members for your consideration and your openness to think about other ways of maybe possibly doing this, and we look forward to engaging further on the 23rd.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Okay. Next, we have a continued discussion recreational fire slash smoker regulations.
I missed in any ask to introduce that?
Thank you. So I think the board is aware that there have been some complaints and concerns about recreational fires, open burning, the use of outdoor cooking devices and the effect on adjacent neighbors and concerns about safety. So we had agreed to discuss this. We had previously briefly discussed it and scheduled an additional discussion for tonight. In anticipation of that discussion, I had prepared a document. I had done some research on how these kinds of things are handled in other municipalities and recommendations from the National Fire Safety Association or National Fire Protection Association. And I had emailed that to the board and to Chief Albright and Dave Pabalka. And and on page seven of that document, there are some additional proposed regulations that I'd like to discuss tonight. Time is short, but I would like to see if we can come to some consensus on how to move forward on some of these things because we have kind of pushed it down the road a little bit. So I guess I would start by asking folks if they have any comments on the document or if you would like me to just kind of go through each item on page seven and talk a little bit about each item. If you have any preference.
If you could briefly go through that because we also have staff and public here that haven't seen the.
Sure, absolutely.
Briefly cover the points.
Yep. So my first proposal is that we regulate open burning, recreational fires and fireworks for the duration of any drought watch, drought warning or drought emergency declaration. And when I say regulate, I mean ban because it's a safety concern. And additionally, it requires the availability of water resources. And during that time, we're supposed to be conserving those water resources. So that's my first proposal. This is something that's not uncommon. I did add in fireworks. That's what, you don't see that as often. But for example, I think both Harris Township and Greg Township both had a ban on open burns in our recent drought watch. I also included a link to the Pennsylvania code that talks about voluntary and mandatory water restrictions during those times. And things like you're not supposed to hose off your driveway, you're not even supposed to water your garden. So if you're not supposed to be doing those things, you're probably also maybe not supposed to be just randomly filling up bucket after bucket to ensure that your fire is safe. So shall I go through each one and then we can discuss? Okay. The next one is that we briefly talked about this. Open burning, and that's not recreational fires, that's open burning, shall be prohibited in all zoning districts within the regional growth boundary and in all residential districts across the township. And so that would include residential neighborhoods that are outside the regional growth boundary. Relatively self-explanatory, and Dave was going to look into whether we can do a prohibition by zoning district for this. The next item is all open burns and smokers shall be at least 50 feet from adjacent property lines and recreational fires, at least 20 feet from property lines. And really, the reason for this is twofold in both regards, safety. One is to minimize the chance of starting a fire on your neighbor's property. And the other is that there are significantly dangerous things in smoke. And this helps ensure that the smoke that you're producing stays more on your property than your neighbor's property. The next item is that all permitted open burns shall have a clearing of 30 feet surrounding them. And this comes from a well-respected source for fire prevention. And this is what's recommended for open burns. And that clearing would involve no dried wood, no dried leaves, and that it's really either gravel or just dirt around the the burn. And then I provided some information. If you live in in a wildland urban interface, which many rural residential areas out here in West Ferguson would qualify for that. That's where homes meet wildlands. You are, this is the suggestion, you're to create a 30-foot zone of fire-resistant space around your home and consider using fire-resistant plants and landscaping. So that that 30-foot distance is of zone is really to help prevent that fire from from reaching your house. The next item, a recreational fire shall be defined. So this is part of the enforcement confusion. As it is now, a recreational fire can be anything from a very small fire to a very, very large fire. We don't have any kind of spatial constraints on what a recreational fire is. But others do, and I believe that I found at the National Fire Protection Association, it's a pretty accepted definition that the fuel area would be no larger than three feet wide and two feet high if it's not contained in like a barbecue grill or an outdoor fireplace. So that's if you have just a fire on the ground. Then the next item also relates to that and that same source for recommendation that all recreational fires shall have a clearing of 10 feet around them. That would be no dried leaves, no dried sticks. It's just dirt or gravel. And if the fire is on the ground as opposed to in a container, it shall be in a pit one foot deep. That's also from the Smokey the Bear Fire Safety website. And then the next item, item seven, is that recreational fires are for recreation and not burning yard waste. And that's to further help define what a recreational fire is as opposed to an open burn. An open burn requires a permit and you can burn yard waste. A recreational fire is not for burning yard waste. It's for burning cut, dried wood or untreated lumber. I added in the next sentences because it was in somebody else's recommendations. The prior six pages, you will find it. And that is that if you are burning yard waste, you will be asked to extinguish the fire and apply for an open burn permit. If your fire fire creates or adds to a hazardous condition, you will be asked to put it out. And then we ask that you're sensitive to how smoke may affect your neighbors. I don't know what all can be included in an ordinance, but I added that in there. It seems like good language to have. Next item, moving to grills and smokers and outdoor cooking devices. There's many references again in the prior six pages that all of those items should be attended at all times. I know we talked before about how maybe some people don't and maybe why the reasons are that they don't. But clearly, the safety directions are you should. And so if we have an individual that's problematic, it's good to have in the regulations, clear statement, these items should be attended at all times. Next, item nine, something that we do prohibit, but may or may not be completely spelled out, is that we prohibit the burning of leaves across the township. This also is found in the Harris Township ordinance, and I believe in the College Township ordinance. Next, open burning shall be prohibited if winds are expected to gust at 20 miles per hour or more. This also, there's a reference there where you can find that information. That's because dusting at that speed increases the risk that you're going to have an ember go airborne, can travel up to a mile and start a fire. And then I added in, I think that if we're going to enforce something, that we should have some sort of repercussions for not complying. And so I just, this I pretty much made up. But I thought that a first violation would warrant a warning, second a fine, third a fine, and I just increased in cost. And also, if somebody has those three violations in one calendar year, they're clearly a repeat offender. They don't know how to get an open burning permit, and maybe they should have a suspension of the ability to get a permit for a year. So that's an overview. Pretty comprehensive and a lot of information, but I'm really interested in getting Fuel's feedback on it.
Well, I would say did a lot of research. And I think that you have a lot of good, good points there and the, you know, well documented. I. So I.
Thanks.
Yeah, I I have, I mean, I I I would think that I could support a ordinance based on this. I don't know. You would have to determine the exact details of specific points, but I don't see anything that I would find to be a problem for me. The only question I do have is with the smokers being attended. In addition to, I mean, there are the smoking smokers or devices, but they're also like smoker sheds. And I don't know how you do, you know, that sometimes operate for 24 hours. I don't know if that would be something would be included or if that's a something we'd have to look into. But other than that, I I have no no concerns on what you proposed there.
Thanks, Steve. The smoker attendance I did find in, which the link is in the six pages. I did find manufacturers' directions for a smoker that did say it should be attended at all times. And as I mentioned in the email, my my goals were safety and ease of enforcement. So I didn't really think it would be appropriate to be like, some smokers have to be attended at all times and other smokers maybe don't. So like you said, maybe we have to explore that more, but that did come from a manufacturer's recommendation.
Yeah, I agree with you, but it was amazing. That research was amazing, and thank you for that.
Oh, thanks.
And yeah, I didn't take exception to anything, really. I thought this was really well researched. I, yeah, I don't see anything that is that I would have a problem with. And I think you were able to figure out how to deal with that, the smoke and the spreading of it without having a what was, what were we trying to find? It was a different type of disturbance ordinance. Yeah.
Nuisance, right?
Having a nuisance ordinance. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I tried to be very objective and measurable when I was working on this. And apparently others have too, because I was modeling after them, so. Present it. Did you have any?
I I agree with everything that has been said, and I I think this is great.
Thanks.
So is any of the staff have any comments on this? I mean, we're also looking at, you know, something that's enforceable, so make sure that.
Chief, I was thinking about you and the officers that might have to respond to a call and really trying to write things in a way that they could objectively define what is a recreational fire and what is an open burn. But I'm definitely open to input, and if you have thoughts on that.
Okay, I mean, that's what the the only thing, you know, when I was going down through the list, I look at the RAs. Our guys, we don't have any maps that have anything as what's an R1, R2. So that would be something that we'd have to modify a little bit on our end. I mean, you know, some of the. I mean, you know, some of this stuff is already in, you know, code, you know, code enforcement's property code. Um, but it does provide a lot of clarification on, you know, untreated lumber and also does cover the leaf thing that we definitely need to get addressed. Um, the outdoor cooker, I mean, as I said, that, that's going to still be one that um, I, there's probably going to be a little pushback, but that's, that's not necessarily up to me on that end.
Thanks. Dave Prabokha or Modrick or do you, either of you have any?
No, I, I don't have any comments, except as Chief Albright noted, I think there's some consideration we need to give to the um, this would likely be a two-step um, regulation. One would be to modify the property maintenance code or the fire code rather uh, that would sort of carve out um, a caveat for Ferguson Township open burn permits. I think what we would look for tonight from staff perspective would be, you know, a motion from the board to draft an ordinance. And then we could take what missed and any prepared, what the boards discussed and try to digest that and um, you know, put it in front of you all in, in a way that makes the most sense and is, is compliant. I think I'm sensitive to some of Chief's concerns that he articulated, and those are some uh, considerations that the board will have to give during the public hearing. But uh, I think we could do it. It's just a matter of um, getting the logistics in order.
Okay, great, thanks. Can I make a motion, Chair? Okay, um, I move uh, to direct staff to draw up an ordinance based on the eleven suggestions made tonight regarding regulation of open burning, recreational fires and outdoor cooking devices.
President, second.
Okay, motion a second. Is there any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see, get back to the right place here.
And given the hour, Mr. Chairman, I, I would, should note that we can defer if the board is interested in um, the designation or excuse me, the green infrastructure policy to a future.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea.
Me too. I want to have a nice conversation about that.
Yeah.
Very hard.
The clock's not a good time to start it. So, okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, which has two pay applications, acceptance of the treasures report and board member requests for a resolution supporting HR 763. That's just a request to place it on the agenda. So is anyone care to pull anything off the consent agenda? If not, take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, motion second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Now we have a request for waiver Parkview subdivision. Turn that over to Dave.
Oh, it's Jenna to introduce the, the waiver.
Unfortunately, I'm having a video problems like you or Steve, so uh, no worries, I'm still here. So on August fourth, twenty twenty, Pantera Engineering on behalf of their client submit an application for consideration of modification waiver for the Parkview subdivision located at fourteen oh one Circleville Road. Tax parcel numbers twenty four, one, one, eight, one, two, eight and twenty four, one, eight, uh, one, two, A. They're requesting relief from twenty-two dash three oh six minor subdivision minor alteration plan. This section of the ordinance outlines a process and application requirements for a minor subdivision. However, what was left out of this chapter during the SALDO update is what constitutes minor subdivision. Uh, minor subdivision isn't defined in the township's ordinances nor in the PAMPC. Staff believes that there was intent to provide an expedited process for minor subdivisions and that the Parkview subdivision is considered to be minor in nature, including your package is a copy of the application submitted as well as the Parkview subdivision plan. Planning Commission reviewed the modification waiver at their August twenty-fourth meeting and recommended approval of the application.
Thank you. Uh, so my understanding this is that the waiver request is just to cover the fact that it's not clearly defined. And so by granting a waiver, we're just saying this is a minor subdivision. Then the next uh, item is to actually consider that subdivision.
Yeah, so granting the um, this modification waiver essentially would expedite the process for this review. So this is essentially a preliminary slash final review of this plan. So this would be the first and last time you would review the Parkview subdivision plan.
Okay.
If it were to be approved.
Okay. So do we have a motion? We have a recommendation from staff.
Hi Laura, moved that the Board of Supervisors grant the waiver from twenty-two dash three oh six minor subdivision and minor alteration plan for the Parkview subdivision plan.
President, second.
Okay, we have a motion a second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are you opposed? Motion carries. Now we get to the actual subdivision plan. So it goes back to Jenna, I guess.
Yes, so the subdivision plan is also included in this packet. This plan is tax parcel twenty-four, one, one, eight, dash, one, two, eight. That's referred to as lot three R on the subdivision plan and it's currently point seven, eight, six acres. Tax parcel twenty-four dash one, one, eight, dash, one, two, eight, A referred to as lot four on the subdivision plan is currently one point nine, seven, one acres. This replot is proposed to add point five oh five acres to lot three R to create a one point two nine, one acre parcel, which is designated on the plan as lot three RR. And lot four would be reduced to one point three, eight, seven acres, which is denoted as lot four R on this plan. There is a shared access driveway to both parcels. Their zone, single-family residential. Planning Commission reviewed this plan at their August twenty-fourth meeting and recommended approval. Uh, included with the agenda is the plan as well as memorandum from myself dated September second, listing outstanding staff comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have a motion?
Hi Laura, moved that the Board of Supervisors approve the Parkview subdivision pending outstanding staff comments outlined in the Director of Planning and Zoning's memorandum dated September second, twenty twenty.
President, second.
Hey, we have a motion a second. Are there any questions, comments? I just wanted to thank John Sepp for his patience and waiting to this point with no questions for him to answer, but so seeing no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have review of the draft Center County Long Range Transportation Plan.
Thank you, I'll keep the introduction brief. Uh, there was a link that was provided with your agenda. Do the draft twenty fifty long-range transportation plan. It's kind of a unique update this year in the sense that it is sort of a transitional uh, period, meaning it's a two to three-year horizon as opposed to its typical four to five-year timeframe. Uh, there is a public uh, comment period that's currently open and expires on September fourteenth. Ms. Strickland's a township representative on the MPO Metropolitan Planning Organization Coordinating Committee. And then Ron Seibert, our Township Engineer, is the Township's representative on the technical committee. So this evening, if there's any comments that the board would like me to forward uh, to the MPO or forward through Ms. Strickland or however you want to facilitate that, um, this is your opportunity to do so, and I will pass any comments or questions or suggestions you have along.
Okay, I, I first ask Lisa if she has any comments about it as the MPO representative.
Thanks, I did want to, um, I did want to just mention a couple of things. So, um, probably what is of most interest to us is the realignment project at Route twenty-six and forty-five in Pine Grove Mills that is still on the plan for twenty forty-one to twenty fifty. It's hanging on at the end there, so it's still on there. Um, we had discussed months ago about um, potentially separating out the traffic signal, so the blinking light. Um, it's on our CIP to replace that with a fully functioning traffic signal. And so we had looked at separating that out in um, in the LRTP from the full realignment project, hoping to get some funding assistance for that since we're planning on doing it anyways. So, so that didn't really go anywhere. Um, it didn't come up in the technical committee's discussions. And given the, um, the concerns over funding and with the changes that are kind of assumed are going to be coming um, in the LRTP when it's uh, looked at again, again, here within the next couple of years. We just kind of left it where it was, that it was still on there. So one thing I think we should probably consider is separating it and requesting that the, that the traffic light um, get moved up as a priority safety project. It meets a couple of the um, the policy metrics that they're trying to meet for performance um, for bike safety and pedestrian safety. So I think it would be a good fit for a project. Um, and I think if we were to ask them to remove the realignment altogether, I think that that would maybe be a good um, way to get that project moving forward. The, the realignment is, I, I just see it as very unlikely to happen. Um, it's again, like I said, it's not on there until twenty forty-one and I'm not sure it's going to stay on there once the um, once the plan is revisited. I, I'm not certain that it's a popular plan in Pine Grove Mills. The project, I do think the light is popular, so I think that is desperately needed for safety. Um, like I said, it's already on our CIPs. I think it's time to consider um, to consider that, so I wanted to bring it up um, and see what everybody thought of that.
I am in support of that very, very practical suggestion. I agree with you that the realignment slash light play, uh, idea is not at all popular in Pine Grove Mills. I don't think it's going to ever get done, especially giving, given the funding situation that we're facing. However, I think that if we identified the light as we know, it's a safety issue um, and ask them to consider moving it forward, then we would have a prayer of getting additional funding for that very expensive project. So I would be various, very supportive of us indicating that, whether it's through letter or verbally. Not sure how that comment would work, but I would be very supportive of that.
Looks like it's like Dave Modrick has feeling great angst of removing this project, so.
Or breaking it up and leaving that one way out there for them to delete.
Did we lose Dave?
Oh, no.
That idea, let's.
Yeah, that's right.
Actually, we're waiting for him to get back on. I'll just say that I don't think he was experiencing great angst at that, considering all of the obstacles to doing it that have been discussed many times, including environmental and the fact that it would affect a house that's on a historic register and just two. But he did have a comment and then he disappeared, so.
Yeah.
I, I
Wait, tech is just not our friend tonight.
I know, it's really a bad night for that. I, I get the interest in, in removing it. I know it is an unlikely project to really elevate um, its, you know, current status in the long-range transportation plan. I just want to note though that there is a very real safety concern at that intersection. There's been um, one fatal accident there uh, that occurred in two thousand and six, I believe. And then shortly after that, we had a near fatal accident that was, you know, very fortunate that the property owner wasn't in the, the part of her house that was impacted. Those uh, safety concerns would not be addressed through signalization. They would only be addressed through realignment. Um, and you know, it's kind of unfortunate that there's all those obstacles that stand in, in its way. Uh, but you know, signaling the intersection without consideration for the realignment, just to be clear, would not have prevented any of those uh, accidents from occurring over the years.
I agree and I a little bit disagree. I agree because it wouldn't have stopped the truck from going into the house. But I remember Dave Modrick said, I think it was Dave, that if we do have a fully signalized intersection, that they can put sensors up further. And if there is a runaway truck, they can make all the traffic stop. So yeah, the house is still going to be a target. Okay, it was Dave Prabokha then.
But I don't know if it's possible, it just was an idea that popped into my
Right. So just while it wouldn't solve all the problems, it definitely would solve the problem of children running across the street, trying to not get hit at the yellow blinking light where you have to pull way out into the road to be able to see. So it would solve a lot of the problems that we can control while acknowledging that there are things that we have no control over. So Dave Modrick is back.
Looks like Dave's coming back here.
Wow, if that wasn't a sign I'm supposed to keep my mouth.
So I, I, I think you had a comment about the time you
Yeah, I, I, literally my computer just went off and said restarting. I, last time that's happened. So um, I'm on my iPhone, I'll get back on my computer after it boots back up. That was interesting. So um, at the risk of voicing an unpopular uh, suggestion, um, staffs talked about, you know, the, the disconnecting of the two projects and and while, you know, we're fine if that's what you decide you want to do, our concern is we don't know how much merit that will be found in a signal without any geographic improvements over what you have right now.
Right, and I think, I think one of the reasons it's a good time to look at doing it is because of the way they're looking at the plan now. Yeah, a great deal of time was spent on um, the performance measures for bike and pedestrian safety and Trish Meek even included the Safe Routes to School program as a, as a marker in something that they want to um, achieve. So, and a walk-friendly community designation is another one. So I think it, I think because of those things, it's a, you know, it's a good time to consider looking at it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure why, sorry, I'm not sure why it didn't go anywhere in the technical committee separating that out. Um, it seemed like that was a better place for that idea to start and, and possibly leaving the realignment at the tail end of the plan. Um, but it didn't go anywhere, so.
Yeah, that, I mean, that was my discussion with the Township Engineer in, in summary, what I, what I mentioned. So maybe from a pedestrian and a bicycle standpoint, you're hoping to get more safety improvements by signalizing it. Because just signalizing it from a flashing light, from a motor vehicle standpoint, even if it's warranted, you, you may, you may not see the safety improvements that you're looking for that you would if you were doing a geometric alignment. But um, uh, but, but you, you said, you know, one's a, one's kind of a more popular uh, you know, position. But, um, uh, but, but you, you said, you know, one's a, one's kind of a more popular, uh, you know, position than the other, obviously. The one with the geometric alignment is, is a lot more costly too.
I mean, if it's, if it is possible to separate that out. And get the traffic light at the front of the plan. Um, and it, like I said, it would support those policy elements that they're trying to include. And then leave the realignment at the end, sure, but, um, that didn't seem to really get any traction, so. And it left the light at the tail end of the plan too.
So maybe the, if we write a letter, it can include all those options and it can be framed as we are willing. To separate out the light because of these safety, pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements that would. You know, be realized. And the savings and being willing to be, you know. Willing to push off a project that is, is also important.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, thinking about it, I mean, it can't, it can't hurt, right, because currently in the CIP, you've got the, you know, entire. Project in as local funding, so if you can get some support for part of that. That'd be great.
And part of my thinking too is the possibility of it getting dropped altogether from the next iteration of the plan, so.
Okay.
You know, it, it seems, yeah. But right, I think possibly a letter from the board outlining, um, the options.
Do we need, um, a motion to direct staff, or is that? Enough?
What do you think, Dave, do you want a motion for that, or?
I, I think if there's unanimous consent amongst the board, then I have direction on writing a letter, but. Up to. Board if you want to.
I haven't heard any objection to it, I think it makes sense. Unless anybody has.
That we would want to present that we are, um. You know, with that we have this traffic signal in our plan. We'd liked it to be pushed to the front of the LRTP, um, and the reasons it meets their, their policy. Their policy, uh, metrics that they're trying to meet, their performance metrics. If, do we want to say to leave the realignment in twenty one, twenty, twenty forty one, or? Fully separated out?
I, I would, uh, say that just separating them out is a separate project. And leave that in there. I don't think it's going to happen, but I think it's worth leaving it there.
And let them pull it out if they're going to pull it out.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on the LRTP that would be of interest that we'd want to comment on, or? Anybody have any comments? Okay, well, I'm gonna move on then. Next item is a proclamation, the Center Region Fall Bike Events and Activities Plan.
And Teresa, if you can introduce.
Uh, provided with the agenda is a proclamation to promote and support the fall twenty twenty Center Region Bike Events and Activities. The proclamation, or this proclamation of Ferguson Township will designate the twenty first, twenty twenty to September twenty seventh, twenty twenty as Bike to Work Week. September twenty second, twenty twenty as Bike to Work Day, and September twenty fifth, twenty twenty as Bike Anywhere Friday. The township, uh, will partner with the Center Regional Planning Agency to promote and publicize the bicycle-friendly events. And activities sponsored by community partners, which include Center, Center Bikes, Center Region Parks and Recreation, Center Moves, Penn State Transportation Services, and the State College Borough. The township will also coordinate with Trish Meek at the Center Region Planning Agency to host a virtual bike chat event. The date and time will be announced here later in the week. The idea or the, um, public can anticipate the bike chat event, uh, to offer bike safety tips, destination for fun spots using the bike trails in Ferguson Township. And offer an opportunity for attendees to ask questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? How about a motion?
I Laura moved that the Board of Supervisors proclaim September twenty first, twenty twenty to September twenty seventh, twenty twenty as Bike to Work Week. September twenty second, twenty twenty as Bike to Work Day, and September twenty fifth, twenty twenty as Bike Anywhere Friday.
Present your second.
Okay, motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And we are moving the review of the draft green infrastructure policies to a later meeting. Next is.
Sorry, is it possible to do it at our next meeting, I'm all excited about it? Or is that already all booked up?
It's very possible.
Excellent.
Then we have an award of contract twenty twenty dash C three cured in place pipelining. That sounds like a Dave Modricar project.
It does, I don't have any of the information in front of me, I can tell you that we. Put the project out to bid, we, um, opened it virtually, we had a couple people attend. And, uh, maybe Dave P can go through the memo, the, the low bidder in this case is, um. Uh, firm from out of state that we haven't used before, but we did do some checks and they are. You know, responsible, responsive bidder, and so we're recommending award of the pipelining. To the lowest responsible bidder, and is it possible, Dave, you could kind of read?
That was so good, I can't improve on it.
You read this dollar.
Threatening that the board award the contract to somebody in an amount of something.
That the board award the contract to National Water Main Cleaning Company for a total of four hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars per their bid.
Thank you.
Sure.
Was that?
Is that a motion?
Sure.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second, presented.
Okay, we have motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, next, we have. Staff and committee reports. Executive Committee. That all gets taken care of at the general forum meeting, so I don't really have any comments on that. Finance Committee, I ducked out of. So if Lisa has any, uh.
Yeah, um, I attended the finance committee meeting, we went over the COG. The COG, uh, program plan. The couple of questions I had been instructed to ask by the board were, um. One was regarding the pool pumps, if, uh, Parks and Rec felt like those pumps were at the end of their life and needed to be replaced and. They basically said they will only replace them if they do need to be replaced. And so that was, uh. That was generally the approach to everything, that they would check it out first, and if the life could be extended, it would be. The other thing I was supposed to ask about was, um, printing of the. The Parks and Rec Activity Guide. That wasn't a hundred percent firmed up yet, but it did sound like they wouldn't be printing anything for the rest of this year. Uh, it would be, they were looking at doing one summer printing and mailing for next year, so. Um, but they're gonna keep an eye on that and see where things are. Um, and then they planned out the. The next meetings, uh, to go over the budget, and, um, I've passed along those dates to Steve. End of September, early October.
And those are always fun. Three days of line by line analysis.
I haven't, I don't think I've missed one yet.
Nope, I don't think so. Okay, then we have Human Resources Committee.
Um, it's pretty much what you see in the agenda, the only. Issue that we actually had any motion on was for the, um, Employee Relations Committee Budget, which we approved. And otherwise, it was basically information that you see right there in the agenda.
Okay. Public Safety Committee.
Okay, that's me, for once I wrote out my report, I'm gonna try to breeze right through it. We met today from two, uh, twelve fifteen to one forty-seven. Um, and as you know, Dan Murphy recently, recently resigned from the State College Borough Council, and he had been serving as chair. Um, I was vice chair, so I was moved to chair, and we elected a new vice chair, Paul Takak, Takak, I don't know how to say his last name, from College Township. Um, and I wanted to say many thanks to Dan for his leadership, and I look forward to chairing the committee. Uh, we took several actions via motion. Walt Schneider had previously presented a draft of the revised Articles of Agreement for the Center Region Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals. He received no further comments on the draft, and today we move to proceed with the adoption. Of the revised Articles of Agreement for the Center Region Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals. We forwarded to the Executive Committee a referral of a motion that the General Forum authorized the Center Region municipalities to adopt the revised Articles of Agreement. Next, we discussed and moved forward the sale of two fire police vehicles to Bellefonte Borough. I can go through the process of this, but there is a process that's established to determine. The fee that would be charged for these vehicles, we agreed with the end price that that process. Produced, and the Public Safety Committee recommended the sale of the two, two thousand and nine fire police units to Bellefonte Borough for a fair market value of fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars. One thing to note is if that Bellefonte, if Bellefonte does successfully repair these traffic units, that would be good because. Alpha would no longer be automatically dispatched to incidents on I ninety-nine, nine, north of Shiloh Road, which they are right now. Next, we discussed a proposal for a part-time hire in regional fire protection. In late July, the Alpha Fire Chief had suggested to the Fire Director that COG hire a third assistant chief or a captain. To primarily focus on rescue-related training and equipment. Steve Baer decided, um, that because the fire protection study is just complete, but we haven't had time to analyze it. Or to act on any of the recommendations, that he did not want to move forward with a full-time hire. Because there are other recommendations in there that we need to consider along with that, but, um, through consultation with the officers. He, um, decided to recommend. Us that we authorize a hire of one or more persons at a rate of twenty dollars per hour for a combined total of eight hundred and thirty-two hours in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The total cost of the proposal is capped at eighteen thousand eighty-eight dollars, of which sixteen thousand six hundred and forty is direct wages. And the program budget for twenty twenty-one is impacted by one point four percent. The position would expire upon hiring of personnel that will be recommended in the fire protection study when that does come out. And the committee reached consensus to support the hire of the part-time third assistant chief or captain. Next, we discussed a budget amendment for a tanker purchase, and y'all remember the recent discussion that we had about how valuable tankers are out here in West Ferguson, because we don't have fire hydrants. Um, so this is a very interesting conversation for me, I did find out that our two tankers, um, one is at Patton Township and one is the Borough, we wondered where they were parked, that's where they're parked. But this budget amendment. It's the twenty twenty-one CIP projected funding of five hundred and eight, five hundred and eight thousand to replace the two thousand and five international tanker for the fire program. The Fire Director, Steve Baer, requested the authorization to expend these funds for the replacement tanker in twenty twenty. And many reasons why, but the main reason is it's going to result in a lot of savings for us, and we do need to replace. The tanker that we currently have because it's had to be towed from the scene and various, it's not in good working order. So the, um, we did move forward a motion that the Finance Committee, as recommended by us, the Public Safety Committee. Authorize the issuance of a purchase order that would encompass up to four hundred and sixty-three, one hundred and seventy-three, one hundred and seventy-three thousand. As identified in the twenty twenty COG budget, fire, COG budget, fire operating, and the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four capital improvement plan. So in other words, it was planned, we bumped it up, and we're going to save money by doing that. Last, we move to staff updates. This actually was most of our conversation. Because Walt Schneider put forward that he, um, is considering an increase in fees on existing structure permits and new construction permits. And, um, the committee did, after extensive dialogue. Have consensus to support these increases. Because. The code, um, reserve is rapidly depleting. Finance Committee had several years ago given them the instruction to not build up a lot of surplus. And so the rate that they set their permits at. Plus the now reduction in new construction have now resulted in a rapid depletion of their funds. So, um, it's a small increase that's being proposed. They have not finalized the request, um, but we gave them consensus to move forward and for more discussion. Uh, the fire protection study is finished and in final, final formatting process, we're going to talk about it next month at our October meeting. And lastly, Sean Kaufman talked about COVID, and, um, as I mentioned earlier, discussed. The increase in the rate of percent positives and how that that's the number that we really should be looking at. Um, and so we can look forward to maybe updates there. Amy is going to be beginning weekly updates again. Thank you for your time, that's it, any questions?
Thanks Laura, any questions for Laura? No, next we have the Climate Action Adaptation Technical Advisory Group, the agenda's in there, did we have any report on that, or is just the agenda is attached?
No, nothing to report, it was on my calendar to attend, uh, but I had a conflict, so I wasn't.
Okay.
Mister Chair. So, uh, there was a executive committee meeting of the Spring Creek Watershed Commission.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just give a brief report on that. So the, uh, discussion was about the funding for the One Water Plan for the watershed. And given that there is the general shutdown and the resulting economic and budgetary challenges, the. Committee decided to, uh, sort of delay things, uh, a little bit. And in the meantime, to do some more groundwork, uh, to understand what is in it, to articulate better and. Document what is in it for the community and what gaps or needs, uh, should be addressed. And also to raise, um, funding by, uh. To look at external sources of funding other than the municipalities. Given that we understand that some of the funding will likely come from the participating municipalities, but we'll also go to. Government agencies, businesses, nonprofits, and so on. So that's, uh, what was discussed, and, uh, I was, uh. Tasked with, uh, talking to Mister Paboka to find out if there are sources of funding which. Could be tapped into, like, write little proposals or something, and also to, uh, see whether, uh, Penn State's. Water Center of Excellence, uh, would be willing to do things with us. Both with respect to raising funds, as well as with respect to the, um, to the efforts that will be undertaken. To come up with the One Water Plan. So that's what was, uh, discussed.
Thank you. And then we have the Manager's Report.
Given the hour, uh, my report's in your packet, the only thing I'll note is that Homestead Park unfortunately had to have the play equipment closed temporarily while we improve. Uh, its safety, there were some identified hazards on, on both pieces of equipment. It's my understanding that we're in the process of ordering a repair. It's my understanding that we're in the process of ordering a repair kit that the manufacturer can provide that will allow us to affect the repairs needed to reopen the playground without the equipment. So hopefully, there's some positive news in the coming weeks on that front. But right now, it remains closed and blocked off. If there's any questions, I can respond to them.
Laura?
I guess, thanks. Sorry, I know it's late. I have a comment question. So I recall that the potential repair, replacement of the Homestead Park play equipment was very, very expensive. But then you said that the repair kits were not at all expensive? And I'm just wondering why Center Region Park and Rec didn't then pay for the repair kits and do the repair?
Well, I don't, I mean, we haven't ordered them yet. I think that's still on the table. We can request that they would. Typically, they would not fund a capital repair if it were something that were made to a piece of play equipment. I don't have any experience with these repair kits. I don't know how involved they are. I don't think they're very costly, but I'm not exactly sure what the price is. I know Jeff Wrestler was working with George Ely or Eli, E O Y, to, to get an estimate on that. So, I mean, we can, we can present it as a maintenance item for-
That'd be great.
Rec to finance, and if they turn us down, they turn us down.
Let's do that because I have not yet heard any repairs at all ever that they've done on play equipment. I think this would be a good place to start.
Yeah, they've done some repairs for us over the years. I mean, we are very leery about repairing play equipment because of the impact it has on liability and warranty. So this repair kit is kind of a new, a new revelation even, even for the township. But typically, if a piece of play equipment isn't that bad sorts, we try to target it for replacement.
Thanks, Dave.
Public Works Director's Report?
My report's in your packet. Again, I can, as follow Dave's lead, given the lateness of the hour and the fact that I can't see my report, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Dave that he can't answer?
I can answer them. I just-
Okay. Well, then we'll move to the Planning and Zoning Director's Report.
My report's included in your agenda packet. Main highlights, as all of you are aware, we had many, we will be having more joint meetings with Planning Commission Board. Otherwise, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions for Jenna?
No, so, not really a question, but it, the news said that there was a land development plan submitted for the College Avenue, corner of College Avenue and Buckout?
Yep.
Okay. They got that variance, right? That parking variance?
Correct.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, and that appears to be it. Unless someone has some communications that they want to share?
Oh, I, I do have to share one. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So Penn State, behind the Hoult's property, they've been doing some construction back there. And I guess even during the drought, the stormwater basins that aren't finished yet were having water just laying in them. And I don't know what to say about that other than, are they going to be, you know, finishing them? Are they just going to have the water laying in them? The person talked about the West Nile virus being found in the State College Borough. Just, I'm not even sure if it's on Ferguson Township or State College property. But it was communicated to me that it's a concern. I would share that concern and just see if anybody can follow up with that.
Are they stormwater basins? Did you say they're under construction or it's a developed parcel?
I don't know if the person that told me really knows if they're finished or not. We're not always, you know, privy to that if they're still under construction or if they're finished. There's so much action going on back there. It's hard to say. But the main concern was that they weren't draining and there was a concern about breeding mosquitoes.
Yeah, the last time I was walking on that trail back there, it, they were almost working in there. So it was surrounded by fence, so I don't, I don't know.
Okay. I mean, Jen, if you want me to, I can follow up with Borough Public Works on that, unless that's something you wanted to do. I mean, I can, I can-
Yeah, if you could just check into it and see if there's a, a problem of something that needs to be looked into.
Right?
Thank you.
We can check where that line is falling and figure out what's going on.
Thanks.
Okay. Then we have calendar items. The Ministry of Offices were closed yesterday. September 15th, we have the joint meeting with the Planning Commission on zoning map amendments. And September 16th, we have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on workforce housing. So we'll be getting to meet with Jeremy for a while here, so. And that is all we have on the agenda. If anybody wants to hang around so we can make it past midnight when we end, we could do that, or otherwise I'll take a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Night.